We have all of the materials, all of the, you know, equipment, all of the, you know, products that we need to make sure that we have a clean and, and safe learning environment. So what I want to share this, this evening is sort of how, how we can think about phasing in 100%. So to start with, as I had mentioned, as a rationale for why we chose to reopen on September 8th in the 100% remote mode, and that was largely due to technology that hadn't been tested yet. So our teachers were not here over the summer for our technicians to work with them to test the equipment. So it meant a headset, which is very new. This is, this did not exist in March when teachers were around. So it's this gizmo. It's the ability to use the desktop as opposed to their Chromebook, which was a more stable device with regards to handling video conferencing. And it was simply the, the ability to feel confident, you know, confident that during a hybrid model, the children who were in classroom, you know, they wouldn't have any difficulty, but it's the children who were learning at home. We were not, and we still aren't sure whether or not the headset and the device, the desktop will actually produce the quality, the sound quality that would allow every child to hear their teacher clearly. So that's still a real challenge to overcome if we were to be in the, in the hybrid model. In terms of another challenge to overcome, in, in classrooms where we can't maintain social distancing of six feet, we need to have enough barriers or partitions to make that happen. I've embedded in the next few slides, kind of a timeline from New York State with regards to how we came to move to this point where we feel that barriers are, will, will give us an opportunity to bring children back. So I'm reading from page two of the New York State Department of Health guidance document, which is on our website and embedded in our, our school reopen, our school reopening plan. And I quote, and this is under the section on social distancing, specifically appropriate social distancing means six feet of space in all directions between individuals or use of appropriate physical barriers between individuals that do not adversely affect airflow, heating, cooling, or ventilation, or otherwise present a health or safety risk. So this is the guidance from the New York State Department of Health. That's the basis of our decision to talk about how we can reopen with all children and certainly by the end of September. The next slide, Janine. You had the slide up, you had the slide deck up, but it's not up anymore.
Okay, one second. I'm sharing my screen. Is it up now?
Uh, yes, it's on page three. That's exactly where we need to be.
Okay, thank you.
These slides on pages three, four, five, and six basically represent a timeline of information that we received, starting with the New York State Education Department, leading to guidance from the regional Southern Westchester BOSI superintendent to the other superintendents in the region with regards to what exactly the six feet of social distancing means in the classroom setting. So I started with the July 13th document, which references, which was from the New York State Education Department, and it references social distancing from the standpoint of physical distancing and meaning six feet of space between yourself and others. So that's the basic definition that started us down this pathway on July 13th. On the same day, the New York State Health Department, Department of Health issued its own interim guidance that clarified the following, I quote, "Social distancing means six feet of space in all directions between individuals or use of appropriate physical barriers between individuals that do not adversely affect air flowing, airflow, heating, cooling, ventilation, otherwise present a health or safety risk." So that was the guidance from the Department of Health on the same day that the New York State Education Department issued its guidance. Next slide, Janine. On July 16th, the New York State Education Department clarified the social distancing of six feet or barriers or face masks or coverings was appropriate as per the July 13th New York State Department of Health guidance document. On July 22nd, the guidance was issued to clarify the July 16th New York State Department of Health guidance stating that six feet slash barriers must be ensured between individuals while in school facilities or on school grounds unless safety or the core activity requires a shorter distance. This document also clarified the use of face masks. Next slide, Janine. On August 5th, the New York State, another agency in Albany, the New York State Office of Facilities and Planning issued an FAQ that stated the following, "Measures should be taken from the edge of the workstation," that is desk, "to the edge of the adjacent workstation," desk in front of the child, "to the back direction. The measurement should be taken from the front of the workstation, desk to the back of the chair directly in front of it." A few weeks later, on August 26th, the New York State Department of, I'm sorry, the Office of Facilities Planning referred back to the July 13th New York State Health Department guidance, which established a, established a six feet of social distancing. The desk measurement would start at the center line of the individual space. The diagram was included in that particular document. And there was also clarification provided about sneeze guards and leaving doors unopened. So why did I take you through this timeline? To show you the moving parts of X, in the explanations that school districts have received since July. And, and when we have had to make adjustments in how we presented information to the public, I think this illustrates why we've had to do that. And as a result of that sort of timeline of, of guidance from Albany, different agencies of Albany, New York State Education Department, New York State Department of Health, New York State Office of Facilities Planning, I reached out to the Southern Westchester BOSI superintendent, who is, you know, does provide guidance for all the superintendents in the region, to ask him to clarify the measurement because we had, you know, a, you know, a roundabout with regards to what marking or measurement would begin. And it just wasn't clear anymore to us. So I reached out to our Southern Westchester superintendent. And on August 27th, the superintendents were informed by the Southern Westchester superintendent that there were inconsistencies across the state on the return to school protocol. The confusion was around how six feet is measured. And the measurement should be person to person, not desk to desk. And New York State is expected to follow up with guidance. So where are we now? Well, we have measured and, you know, the weaving, Joe Monterato, his entire facilities, buildings and grounds team, custodians, as well as the building leaders have measured and remeasured and moved furniture around, moved furniture out, moved furniture back. And we're at this point where we feel that by following the original guidance from the New York State Department of Health that stated either a six feet of social distancing or a barrier that doesn't obstruct the airflow, et cetera, et cetera, that, and, and the fact that we purchased, thanks to Maureen Carballo and Joe Monterato, desk partitions, which we'll show a few photos in a second. We feel pretty comfortable with continuing down the pathway to procure more partitions, not only the ones that are on the desk, but floor partitions as well, or barriers that will allow us to bring students back by the end of September if nothing else changes, and we'll talk about that as well. So within the month of, I should say, the first week of September, so next week, September 8th through the 11th, we plan on being in 100%, 100% remote mode. And we'll learn whether or not, you know, that's possible on the basis of whether we will have bandwidth issues here in our district, or that there are bandwidth issues that take place or that derive from the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center, who services all the districts in the region in some form, shape, form, or fashion. And bandwidth has been an issue. And we were notified of that as early as last week, that, that there could potentially be more issues with regards to being able to, to provide the bandwidth for all the districts that will be video conferencing from classrooms, especially as we use Zoom or Google Meet. We also need to understand whether or not our desktops and our headsets will provide a quality of audio at home for children who are learning from home rather than in school. So those are two major sort of issues that we want to make sure that we take a look at and understand very clearly, starting on next Tuesday. Next slide, Janine. Um, the, there's, the promising development has to do with barriers and partitions, the ones that we currently have and the ones that we've ordered and that are coming. Martin is one of our tradespeople and he, he can, he makes, he can construct bathrooms, he can make rooms and, you know, we can be flooring, he can also make partitions. So he's made about 80 to, 80 to 90 standing and desk partitions, and he continues to produce more. And actually, about an hour ago, we visited him in his shop here in Fair, in the Farragut Middle School, the Farragut complex, and saw him in action, actually, you know, producing more of these partitions. In addition, we've ordered, Maureen and Joe, 100 large partitions, which you'll see shortly, to separate different sections in the classroom where we can't social distance by six feet. And the first group of those will arrive on September 11th. I'm sorry, there's a one missing there, September 11th. The second group, 200 additional large partitions will arrive on September 16th. So September 11th and September 16th, we will have 100, I'm sorry, 300 large partitions in addition to the partitions that are, the barriers that are on each child's desk. And you'll see the photos in just a second. Next slide, Janine. So this is one of the classrooms at Hillside. So that large, this large partition that you see, the wooden partition, are the ones that Martin makes here in the building. The ones on top that you'll see are, each child has one of these on their desk. So keep in mind, every child is required, you can stay there, Janine, every child is required to have a mask, wearing, every child is an adult is required to wear a mask at all times during the day, with the exception of when they're outside having lunch, or they're outside having a mask break. So this is a classroom with all of, each child having a, a partition on their individual desk. And this large barrier is just one more way in which we can have more, you know, have a full class, but also have a division between and amongst students and, and the teacher. So that's what this slide represents. Next slide, Janine, thank you. This is another classroom in Hillside. Again, you'll see all of the individual partitions on their, on the tables, which again, show you that it is a full classroom. So this would, this is a regular classroom at Hillside that has all the desks and tables and chairs for that particular group of students, and all of the, the partitions that the children will have. So they will have their mask on, and if they want a face shield, they can also have that, but they'll also have these individual partitions, which do have to be cleaned daily. They will be left in the buildings, but they, it's one for each child. So no one has to share one of these. And that's universal, that's every child in the school district. Next slide, Janine. And this is just another angle. In the very front, near the smartboard, you'll see a standing partition. That's one that, I believe it's one that Martin built. I don't see the wheels, but it's a movable.
He built that one.
He built this one? So it's a very light one that can be moved anywhere in the room by the teacher. The teacher needs to stand in front of it, I'm sorry, behind it, if the teacher needs to stand or sit behind it, it's enough coverage for the teacher who would, you know, would like to have that additional barrier as they're working with, with children. And as you, and as, and as you can see, it's throughout the, the classroom. Next slide, Janine. And again, just another angle, that if every piece of furniture that belongs in that classroom remains there with those desktop partitions, that's what it would look like. And in this particular photo, we have a single desk with chairs. So before it was tables and chairs, and so this is just another version. And again, a full class, it's not a hybrid model, it's a full class. So that's, that, and there's a partition that you can see the legs at the very corner, the lower left-hand side, you can see the partition that the teacher would have, that could move that, you know, anywhere that he or she would like to move it in the classroom. And then the last photo is a couple of partitions. So you can see the, the, everywhere you see the wood in these photos, it's a part, it's a larger partition. So you'll see the teacher's partition in the very front, there's a partition over by the window. And these are the floor partitions that can section off areas and provide that additional safety, you know, for children. And then again, in cases where we don't have social distancing of six feet, this is the process that's being used for some parents who have spoken to or, you know, or been to other school districts, where those districts plan on bringing in children, whether it's staggered or all in, they are going to, going to achieve this by having partitions both on students' desks, some are only putting partitions on desk, and they're not even using these larger partitions. So the larger partitions are an extra layer of security, especially if, when we have classrooms where, you know, every student is going to be there. Those are, those are the classrooms where you will see those additional larger floor-based partitions. Next slide, Janine, thank you. So in terms of our next steps, this Thursday, we are going to be having a faculty meeting with the entire district, a district-wide faculty meeting, so that we can talk about the, the classroom barriers. Teachers have, you know, been here and they've seen the barriers, the ones on the, on the students' desk, as well as the larger ones and the ones that they have that they can use and move around in the classroom. And we'll talk about those and listen to any concerns that they have. And we'll talk about the schedule that we distributed, that, that shows our phase-in with regards to the first two weeks in that schedule showed that we're on 100, in a 100% remote mode. So we'll be reviewing that schedule. And then after the faculty meeting on Thursday, each building leader will have a faculty meeting to talk about more building-specific concerns with regards to classroom barriers and, and the other safety protocols that we have in place. Next slide, Janine. So in terms of Hillside, and I do have the Hillside administrators here, present, and again, this is all contingent upon the ability to have all of our barriers in place. And I mentioned to you, the first 100 are coming in, the larger ones on September, they'll be here by September 11th. The next group of those will be in by September 16th. The first week, based upon the numbers of barriers that we currently have, next week, the middle school team and their building reentry team feel that they can bring in the kindergarten and grade one students for orientation, and the other groups of students, other grade levels will be learning remotely. Does the revised schedule, could you click on that, please? Janine, thank you. And I have Amy and John here. So the plan is, Amy and John, since you can sort of run through this more quickly, could you, could you jump in?
Sure, Valerie.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. So we created a plan for a quicker rollout, where students would be able to come to school sooner than, than we had initially intended. So I think it would be easiest, Janine, if you could scroll down. Is the, is the schedule actually on this document?
It is.
So I wonder if we could start down and then slide up? That might be the easier way for us to see. Okay, so. I don't know if it's cut off for everybody, but um.
It is cut off.
It is.
There is, I think, Janine, if you scroll up, there is a corner at the, the right-hand side that you can click on and it will expand. Go on up. Oops, no. I think it's within the document. Yeah. You know what, we'll just.
I can speak to it anyway, just.
Maybe, oh, here we go. Thank you, Janine.
Great. And then, Janine, if you can just scroll down, please. So a proposal that we have come up with at Hillside in order to move our children in sooner would be to begin learning for all students on September 8th, as intended, with remote learning. And remote learning is referring to the video conferencing experience with teachers. So teachers would be interacting with our children in live video conferences, and that would be for grades K4. So every time you see remote, we're talking about video conferencing where the teacher is actually interacting with the children. So on September 8th and September 9th, K4 would be remote. And then on September 10th, we would bring our kindergarten students in for an orientation, while grades one through four still stayed remote. Moving then on to Friday, the 11th, we would bring our kindergarten students all in. That would mean inviting all of our children, green and gold, into school for a full all-in, at the same time having orientation for grade one, and keeping grades two through four remote. We identified next to the kindergarten all-in, the LS in red, and that stands for live streaming. So just to make sure that it's very clear, the difference between remote is video conferencing with the teacher, where the teacher is interacting with the children, talking to them via the camera back and forth, whereas the live streaming is when, in an all-in model, the camera would be on the teacher and the lessons would be live streamed to students at home, but the interaction wouldn't be happening because the teacher would be interacting with the children that are in front of the teacher in the classroom. Moving on to week two, we are continuing this roll-in model. So now on September 14th, kindergarten and first grade would be all-in. And again, both kindergarten and first grade remote learners would be getting a live stream. Second grade would have their orientation, third and fourth grade would have remote, which is the video conferencing. Then we continue to roll in. So by the 15th, our kindergarten through second grade are all-in with the live streaming for at-home students. Third grade would have an orientation, fourth grade would have remote learning with the video conference. We have the 16th, which continues to be a flex day, giving us the opportunity to work with the remote students and give them a student orientation, because they will not have had that chance to have the orientation. And then on the 17th, we have a K3 all-in, again, live streaming for those students that are at home, and the fourth grade would have their orientation. And this would set us up for.
Oh, we just lost you, Amy. Amy, for John.
Yes.
Okay, we just lost you for a second.
Am I still there?
Yes, you are now.
Maybe I'll just turn the camera off, just so I have a little bit more. Okay, can you hear me, Valerie?
Yes, thank you.
So the plan has a few pieces to it that we wanted to share in regard to what it would allow for, and then also what would be necessary in order for it to happen. So what it would allow for is that students would be remote that first week, and that would allow for teachers to give them the opportunity to learn the web-based tools, which we feel is very important, especially because this is going to be a flexible year, and we may need to go into a remote situation at any point. Secondly, it allows for orientations for all of our grades. Normally, we only do orientation for kindergarten and for new students, but new students meaning new to Hillside, but we feel that it's very important this year to do orientation for all of our grades, because there's a lot that's different. Students will be entering through different doors, students will be walking in the hallway differently, bathrooms will be used differently, and we want to be able to orient our children and also give them the opportunity to come to school, meet the teacher, and really build the relationship. In addition, our grade level orientations will be customized. So what we've talked about is that our kindergarten orientation may look very different than our third grade orientation. We're going to give our teachers the autonomy to organize the orientations to make sure that they meet the needs of our children, and that will be communicated out. We will need to hire additional monitors in order to be successful in this plan, because we need cohort supervision. One of the things that the guidance has outlined. Pardon?
No, I was thanking Janine, because this is what, where you want, you were reading from that, so I wanted everyone else to be able to see this section.
Thank you. So we, we are going to need additional supervision, because the cohorts need to remain together, which means that each class will be outside separately, not together, even during recess time. Classes will be playing together but not mixed together because of the cohort limits. So we'll need additional monitors to be able to assist us. In addition, the arrival and dismissal will be, need to be revised, because we cannot have a congregation of students. We'll need to have students go to their classrooms immediately upon arrival. So we'll need additional supervision for that time. We also need to work out the details of transportation, as the guidance has encouraged us to make sure that families are walking and driving their child to school as much as possible. That will help us with the transportation for students. So there are a number of factors that will contribute to the ability for us to bring all of our children back. These include the sufficient barriers, as Valerie had explained. We need to reduce the bus transportation, because I, right now, we have a lot of students taking advantage of the transportation. We certainly will need more teaching assistants or monitors to be able to support the congregation of students and families and help supervise, so that we can make sure that we bring students back in a way that can be socially distanced and safe for all.
Okay, and we can go back to the, the slide deck. Thank you. We're at slide 16. Thanks, Janine. And 17, go ahead. So again, the phase-in is contingent upon having barriers. So the week of the, of next week, September 8th through the 11th, is the 100% remote learning for grades five through 12. The week of September 14th through the 18th is hybrid, and we will phase in grades five and six. So Jennifer Sporelli and Kevin Hanlon are already in the process of working through what that would look like. Phasing in at the high school is a challenge, because there are, there are courses that mix in all four grade levels. So to be able to phase in ninth grade would mean that, you know, you're also, you could potentially have in a ninth grade course, students in, in the, who are in 10th grade, 11th grade, or 12th grade. So that's a bit more challenging to, to be able to pull that off. We'd have to basically make a decision, you know, to bring in, you know, more children at the high school level, or, and, you know, and talk to, you know, the faculty and staff about how they could see or envision phasing in of the older children at the high school. But it, the reason that it doesn't work as smoothly as grades five through six is that they are commingled in other types of courses besides their grade-level English, math, you know, social studies and science courses. The week of September the 21st through 25th is a hybrid or all-in. On the basis, again, of having sufficient barriers and no other changes regionally with regards to the infection rate, and obviously, you know, not, you know, the fact that, you know, that we, you know, don't have any other sorts of issues that would, such as staffing, that would change in a way that would make it a little impossible for us to hold courses. So again, are we able to return fully by the end of September? If the infection rate remains low, if we receive all barriers for classrooms, and if staffing does not change dramatically, we will be able to meet these conditions and return by the end of September. So that is the presentation with regards to the 100% all-in model. I just also wanted to mention that the, is part of a requirement of the board, that they do walk through the buildings, and I'm sure that board members will also talk about what they saw during the walkthrough. They saw the classrooms, they saw, you know, the partitions, and they saw the decals on the floors and the signage, all the, the CDC COVID signage all throughout the building. They saw the two nurses' rooms, one where, you know, it's regular, you know, school-related issues, and another location, that's the isolation room, where, you know, if, if after, you know, a child or an adult arrives in the building and have symptoms, there's a room that's not. there's a room that's not a part or not attached to the regular nurse's office for those students or staff member until they're picked up. And, you know, we have all the, you know, personal protective equipment, lots of masks, and hand sanitizer machines or devices attached and mounted to walls and in classrooms. We have a different schedule for all of our custodial and cleaners who have evening shifts. Maureen Carballo and Joe Monerato adjusted that, so that we have all of those people here while children are, or while we are here essentially, to make sure that there's ongoing cleaning and ongoing measures to make sure that we stay on top of all the areas that students visit regularly and just continuously keep the cleaning protocols focused heavily on, you know, where students are and where, you know, lots of us spend a lot of time. And we have a grab-and-go system, as you know, for lunch. We'll be using all the large spaces that we need to use, including a gymnasium, cafeterias. We have a grant end to our PTSA, SEPT and HEP for outdoor furniture. So we're converting a parking lot right behind Farragut into a multipurpose outdoor space that can be used for lunch, for learning, and for lounging. We hope to have furniture that, you know, can also be left outside within a storage sort of unit, so that the custodial team doesn't have to bring it back in. At the end of the day, we have, we'd like to order some stools, collapsible stools, so that students can just take them, grab and go to Burke Estate Fields or to Reynolds if they like to. So all the spaces certainly around this, around the Farragut complex where I am, will be used as a courtyard, so physical education, music courses, but any course, any class can be outside. And certainly, the administrators are encouraging that. And the same for Hillside, which actually has more well-developed classroom spaces. So all locations will be converted into these multipurpose locations. And until we can't be outside, we'll stay outside. So that's the purpose with regards to also ensuring that we remain safe. Safety is not compromised with this plan. We have responded to anyone who's needed additional PPE or, you know, HEPA filters in their classrooms, or some other, you know, filtration, you know, modification that's needed. We've made those. And if we hear about others, we'll make those as well. So those are my comments for, with regards to the 100% all-in student model.
Thank you, Valerie. Are there any board members who have any questions or comments at this time about what Valerie just presented?
I'm just wondering, is there additional insurance or paperwork along those lines that needs to be done for the outdoor classroom spaces that teachers might use? Or is it because there's not a building structure set up, you don't need to have those? How does that work?
That's correct. And Joe or Maureen, you know, feel free to interject if I'm off-base here. So the spaces are currently, you know, we have a playground space. I'm going to use the Farragut complex as an example. So the playground space is, you know, has asphalt or, you know, it's already, you know, used by children, you know, primarily for playing. The next space over is a parking lot, where I park, Maureen parks, Joe, Melissa, everyone. All of us will be moved to this service section here on Farragut, which is, belongs to the school district, so that's why we can park there. So we'll be moved there, so that that entire space can be converted. All the tables that we hope to use, that, as I said, will be multipurpose furnishings that, you know, can, you know, that can be used for lunch, or for learning, or, you know, taking a group of students out. So, and we'll purchase a barrier, so that obviously, we can't block off the entrance into the area, because it is a fire lane. So we will make sure that we, you know, sort of scallop that area with, you know, very sturdy barriers, so that that's not an issue, and so we still have a lot of that space. If there is a need for, which we certainly hope to have, because we want to use the space all year round, we will be ordering, hopefully, if we receive, you know, a grant that we've applied for, retractable awnings, which will allow us to, you know, keep children out there as often as possible, as well as a heating lamp. And again, those things are, you know, we'll check with our engineer on with regards to, you know, needing to have a permit for that, you know, we certainly don't have enough time. Maureen, go right ahead.
Yes, so to Valerie's point, everything that we're doing is that we're not erecting the tents that were some of what we have been talking about earlier, which are much more permanent structures and require, the square footage of those tents are, is not what we're talking about. So we have always had the ability, P.E. classes traditionally have gone outside when the weather allowed it. So it'll be similar to that practice and just using all of our outdoor spaces to, you know, encourage people to go outside, and certainly for lunch. Similar to the way students go out for recess, providing outdoor space for them to eat would be consistent and would not be an insurance risk. Similar to what Amy said, I think, while everything we're thinking about, we understand the need for additional supervision, and as Valerie said, you know, barriers and making sure that things are done, so children are safe. And that's all in our planning, thinking about, you know, what, you know, if children were brought outside to lunch, of course, then we would have active supervision, very similar to the way we supervise playgrounds. So it's just encouraging additional spaces to eat outside. And then, of course, by not doing anything fixed, and to Valerie's point, an awning or a tent that's under a certain square footage does not require a building permit. So that's why we would be able to use some of those to, you know, allow people to use it, even maybe in, maybe like drizzle, if they, you know, wanted to do so. In terms of the heat lamps, that is one of the items that we would have to work with our engineers, with the building department, to ensure that, you know, those can be used. That was the only one piece, I would say, that we would want, you know, clarification on the use of them in, with children. But everything else that we're putting into thinking are things that we can operationalize and not be different from what, you know, we currently do in terms of some of those spaces.
And just keep in mind, we also are, you know, committed to having all the windows open, so that there's a constant and steady flow of fresh air. So the doors are open, as I mentioned earlier, in one of the guidance documents from the Office of Planning, basically granted us, you know, the ability to have our classroom doors open. As you know, that's certainly not traditionally something, a practice that we engage in for safety reasons, but because we really need to make sure that we keep, you know, the air, you know, going through our classroom spaces, the windows will be open, the doors will be open. And obviously, air conditioners can run, because they do, you know, also promote, you know, flow of air. And as I said earlier, I don't know if Joe is on the call, or Maureen, if you wanted to speak to any other enhancements that we've made with regards to, you know, under what conditions would someone get a HEPA filter or some other kind of ventilation.
So as every, you know, as we've spoken about before, we did do a full, we did bring our engineers in to do a full audit analysis of our systems and where recommendations or where things need to be remediated. We have either addressed those in all the classrooms and in areas that are in the works, and they're not instructional spaces. In addition to that, we have secured some HEPA filters for for different classrooms that may, that may be something that is either a need that, in the particular room. So we have, you know, we've started to purchase, some of those are kind of like standalone units to be put into certain spaces. Filters, as we've spoken about before, any recommendation or upgrades to filters, and especially in our larger spaces and our gym areas where the air handlers can handle that. We have put in the MERV 13s and in other areas. The recommended filter that doesn't decrease air, as Joe had mentioned before, things that, in addition to good filter, but we also don't want to impact the amount of fresh air that's taken into a space. So right now, with all of that, we are up to, you know, every recommendation that has been outlined by our engineers, we have either already put in place or will be fully, you know, done by the next week or so, in some of those office spaces that were identified.
Were there any classroom spaces, Maureen?
Well, the classroom spaces in which there were some enhancements, some of it was a matter of changing out a ceiling tile. There were no classrooms, any of the classroom, none of the classroom spaces needed any other type of exhaust unit. Sometimes it was, it was more to do with the drop ceiling and the need to change out some of the tiles and there to make sure that the air exchange was, you know, able to get to the exhaust, you know, in that particular room. And again, that, before the work was done, before the audit, and then the gentleman did come back, and they actually did detail out what the, what was, what needed to happen and, you know, telling us exactly what exactly would need to be purchased, and, you know, where, and where it should be installed, and all of those recommendations, we did follow. So I think we do have, you know, we were fortunate that we had our engineers able to do that, because that was something that, you know, really gave us the, all the information in every, every part of the building. The entire building received that type of analysis, so.
Thank you, Maureen. If there are folks on the call that have not muted themselves, if you could please do that, there's a little bit of a distraction. Thank you.
Just ask a follow-up quickly. So just to be sure and clear, even if, let's say, there, you know, some of the furniture for the outside, or the tents, or we, you know, let's say we don't get every piece that we were hoping for, we're still saying that the school classrooms and the ventilation, all those systems are in such good shape that, you know, the hope is to phase everybody back into returning. That's my understanding, right? Yes.
Based upon the safety protocols that we've been following, and certainly, you know, Joe Monerato and the custodial team have been engaged in these safety protocols since the beginning of March. As you recall, we were the first school district that closed, not because we had a case, but because there was a lot that we didn't understand about what was happening. So at that moment, Joe and his team, along with Maureen, ordered, you know, all the sort of devices and equipment that, you know, we would need to expedite the cleaning and do it in such a way where it's, you know, it's not just cleaning, but it's disinfecting and sanitization. So all of that is, you know, here in our possession in abundance, because of the fact that we, you know, started out March with needing to do this, or go into that, you know, that high degree of disinfection and sanitization. So all of that, all of that is available in here, and they know, the team knows how to use it. They have all the protective gear that they need. If we need to clean at that level, because there is a, you know, that there happens to be a case that someone tests positive, you know, here in the district, I mean, it's going to happen in many places, because, you know, we don't have any, you know, we don't have the ability to mandate COVID testing. So we, you know, we basically have to rely upon the practices that we're putting into place, which, you know, we have been implementing, you know, with, you know, with the level of seriousness and doing all that we can to make sure that, you know, the learning environments and spaces are clean. And we'll have to, of course, do a lot with the students to make sure that they're acclimated. We have to do a lot with our staff as well. I mean, many of them haven't been here, they picked up their things in June. They weren't here in their classrooms, you know, since they left in March. So a lot of attention has been devoted to, you know, safety protocols and really understanding, you know, the importance of wearing your mask at all times, making sure that, you know, hand, you know, hand washing occurs frequently throughout the day. We manage, you know, how we interact with high-touch, you know, items and surfaces, that, you know, we're taking care of ourselves. There, you know, some staff members, you know, are also reminding each other to wear, to make sure that their masks are on, which, you know, I really appreciate. So we're doing everything that we possibly can to make sure that the guidelines are upheld and that when anything is brought to our attention, you know, we are going to respond and mitigate the circumstance or the situation and call upon our engineers if we need to, or call upon our medical director if we need to. We'll contact the local health department if we need to, to follow up on any of the items that, you know, may, you know, materialize, that certainly will, you know, we foresee being in the position of having to respond to.
I did want to tell people who are listening that our walkthrough as a BOE and with the administrators today through the buildings was very impressive. There's, there really has been a tremendous amount of work done on ventilation, getting outdoor air into places that need it, to the barriers that are being constructed and the sneeze guards or desk shields. There have been a lot of upgrades. That team has worked incredibly, incredibly hard, and it was impressive to see what they've figured out.
I can add to that, and then, of course, if any other board members have any questions or comments further, that when board members toured both Hillside and the Farragut complex, one of the things that we were encouraged to do was to view the room from the, from the students' level and to get down to where a desk was positioned and see what the room looked and felt like from there. And I think, you know, I was, I continue to be impressed that, that the safety is at the forefront, but that also the building leaders and our superintendent and Maureen and Melissa are really trying to make the spaces not only safe, but, you know, spaces that are mindful to our students. So that was something that I was, I was impressed by in the walkthrough today, in addition to the extensive cleaning and work and reorganization that our staff is doing around the clock and has been doing all summer. Are there any other board comments or questions at this point?
Go, Jeremy.
Okay, Jody, thank you. I did just want to take this opportunity, because sometimes it could be an hour and a half before we really start talking again. I thought that presentation was fabulous, and I really think it addressed something that was missing in our August. We kept having a couple times where we had to say that we had three models, but we were only down to two models. And I think the work that went in in August must have been impressive. And it all starts with Valerie, but we can list everybody here. Obviously, Melissa, Maureen, Joe, and then, of course, building principals and assisting principals. So I think we're at a point now where, you know, our administration is able to choose between three different models. And we got a lot of emails to the board when we weren't able to say that. And I just wanted to say it before we get to the 11 o'clock hour. But thank you for that presentation. That's a lot that has changed in two weeks, and it made a lot of sense for where we're at now. And nobody, nobody's guaranteeing anything. We are keeping our eyes open, but thank you, that was helpful for me.
So I apologize, I had to leave for another meeting, but when I got there, I decided to cancel it, so I could come back to this. But I too want to thank everyone. Obviously, people have worked incredibly hard. I know people have been tolling day and night from the buildings on up, getting the buildings ready themselves on up. But I know, and I know there are a lot of mixed feelings among faculty, among staff, among parents. And I think there's not going to be a right answer that everyone is going to be happy with about what we're doing. But if we look around, we can already start learning lessons from what's happening in colleges, what's starting to happen in Europe. And I think we have to be extremely cautious in terms of what we do. It's not easy for kids. I love what they've done in the classrooms. It's not easy for kids. I'm, I love what they've done in the classrooms. Hard for me to imagine kids in elementary school sitting at their desks around their, in their partitions. I don't know what we're going to do about that. And what happens when kids don't and won't do that? And I guess I'm thinking a lot about teachers and I think that, you know, teachers are in many ways at the, at the greatest risk when we come back. And they are, after all, are essential workers and I know they're good soldiers, but I still, I can't keep, I can't help but wondering what have we gotten feedback from teachers as we've gone ahead to make the plan? If we make a plan to come back all in by the end of September? I guess for me, I need to know that teachers have some, have had some input in this and that they can be. This is going to be a very difficult next few months and we need to have everybody's morale and it, and it's draining. I know people are exhausted, but I'm curious about what feedback we've gotten from teachers, even from the first couple of days of, of school and how that's been, but I think we need, and, and obviously they're not all going to agree either. I get that. But I think their voices have to be heard and listened to and I think it matters. There's a lot that matters these days and I think in schools, teachers really matter.
I think that Amy can speak to the, she has, her school reopening or reentry committee did have teachers. So Amy, if you wanted to address that and obviously the other administrators who are present, I think it would be a good sort of context to, to hear what they are, what they've heard from their faculty. They had a faculty meeting today, so I think this would be a good opportunity to hear from, you know, so far what, what, you know, people are thinking and feeling and what they've expressed. And as I said earlier, faculty, there's a faculty meeting, a district-wide faculty meeting on Thursday afternoon, a voluntary one. And hopefully we'll have a number of people who participate. If they don't, if they can't, there, it will be recorded. But the faculty building leaders will follow up next week with faculty meeting to focus on the building level concerns about the classroom barriers and any other, you know, concerns about safety. So, you know, teacher voices have not been omitted in this process. So if Amy or Amy and John and/or the building leaders of Farragut or the high school would like to just share on behalf of what they've heard from their faculties, I think that this would be a good opportunity to share that.
I think that would be great. And I think, I certainly like to hear from Amy. I know particularly in terms of Hillside and younger children coming back. Valerie, I know that there were teachers on the committee, but there were only a few teachers and I'm, I still never got, it's still never clear to me that they sort of polled teachers in general. I wasn't clear about that. And I, I, I think we'd have to ask that at each level, the building administrators be able to get input from teachers if it's not coming directly to you or to Melissa. When, when we start really thinking about what this is going to look like. You know, we've heard of other places in this country already, teachers have refused to come to work. Teachers have gone out on strike. I mean, it's happening everywhere and I think we have to work with our teachers so that we're not in that kind of a position.
Did you want me to speak Valerie?
Please, thank you, Amy.
Sure. So Jody, to your point, I think that there are, just like you said, there are people that are feeling all different ways. Just like our families are feeling very mixed, our teachers are feeling mixed as well. I will tell you that I think our teachers feel that if we can get our students in, in a very well orchestrated way, ensuring that we have the right supervision, all the right systems in place. And when I say systems, I mean, systems with every letter capitalized because it's going to require huge effort of building systems that are new and every family and teacher and staff member following our systems. I think teachers feel that it is better for kids, obviously, to be in school because they will have the teacher there. The challenge that we have is, you know, school's going to look different and we need to recreate what that experience is for children. So I think, you know, I think the slow roll-in is critical. You know, the idea of bringing our littlest ones back first, we, we know that that's best for young children. When we look at the guidance from the state and it identifies the students of high need, early learners are on there. So it's not only, you know, L students and students with IEPs, it's also our youngest learners. And for that reason, we are committed to doing what is best and what we can do for our children. But again, it's going to require a whole lot of system supervision and a lot of conversation. And, you know, to Valerie's point, at Hillside, we've had a committee of teachers and staff on our reentry committee that have been meeting all summer, about 20 different volunteers. And we've spent countless hours together creating, recreating, dreaming, unraveling and just refiguring out so many different plans. What I can tell you is there hasn't been a perfect one. Nothing's perfect. There will always be areas that we aren't thrilled about. But ultimately, what we want is to make sure that our children are safe and that our children can learn.
Valerie, I'm going to jump in. It's Lou. You don't mind?
Hi Lou.
How are you? Good evening, everyone. I mean, Amy's kind of summed it up. You know, teachers are nervous, you know, staff members nervous. I'm not going to lie to you and say that I'm not nervous. And I think, you know, as, as human beings, I think we have to take things in steps, right? I think that there was a big step just getting, getting everyone back in the building as far as the adults is concerned on, on, on Monday. And, you know, eventually, we all know that we have to all get back into the building. But, you know, the best laid plans, and we know this, you know, tonight we're talking about, you know, possibly trying to get us all in. And tomorrow we may be talking something totally different. That's, that's how this has been changing and evolving. I mean, I was just reading an article tonight that in Croton, the teachers went back and one staff member tested positive for COVID and they went now to co, to remote learning for the first week. And they were opening up this, this Thursday with students in the building. So things can change. You know, the faculty is nervous, the faculty is excited, the faculty is curious. I, I, I just think, you know, the more we have conversations and, and, you know, I have to, I have to say, we must have had 10 faculty meetings over the summer and to a, to a staff member, they all attended. They were all voluntary staff, staff meetings, but I had all my faculty at every single meeting. And they were asking questions. How can we get it right? What can we do to make it better? How do we keep everyone safe? And those, that's the common themes, right? And I think from the high school perspective, you know, Valerie touched on this before. It's a little harder to bring everyone in at the high school level because we don't really cohort at the high school level. You know, what I mean by cohorting is we can't keep all of our kids together in one room, just like they do in the elementary school. Because of all of our kids have different levels in mathematics and different sciences and different electives. So it's a lot of movement. And, you know, at this point, I think we want to kind of limit that movement and kind of see how things go. But, you know, we had a conversation today about, you know, what it would take to get us all in at some point. You know, there really wasn't a timeline specific, but our, you know, our teachers, we're going to, we're going to talk again next week and we'll talk again the following week and we'll talk in between that. And at some point, you know, there'll be a decision whether, you know, we stay out or go in, but we have to be flexible. Because even when we go in, you know, one, one event can happen where we're back out and, and we have to be flexible and be ready to adjust. And I think from the high school perspective, I think we have a little bit of an advantage in that our, our students, you know, the learning curve to go remote is a lot different than it is at the elementary level. And that, and that's significant, A. And B, the childcare piece at the high school is, is not an issue as, as well. So from the high school perspective, it's a lot easier in some respects. And it's, it's easier to kind of wait a little bit than it is at the elementary level where, you know, if, if we do go out, those poor kindergarteners and first graders who have to go on, on Google meets or Zoom and, and kind of do all that stuff is a little more difficult than it is for a ninth or 10th or even a, a senior.
Yeah, thanks Lou. I just wanted to jump in. I think, I, I think your points were excellent. I think, you know, it's exactly what I've been thinking about. You know, I, I think human beings absolutely hate uncertainty. And we, we want to take the variables and if it's 10 variables, 20 variables, we want to put them all in a, in our brains or a machine and kind of say, given all these variables, something pops out the bottom and here's what we're doing. And, and that has been, and, and as a board, we have received tens, if not hundreds of emails from people who've taken their 10 pieces of data, popped it into their brain and popped out what they conclusively believe to be the best path forward. And, you know, we get them kind of over and over and over again. And, you know, what, what we don't get is what Lou was just talking about, which was, you know, this request for dynamic assessment ongoingly. Because, because no one in the community wants dynamic assessment ongoingly. Everyone wants an answer that they can have now to start their planning. I mean, I'm no different. You know, I've got three kids, first, third, fifth grade, and I've got to figure out who the heck's going to take care of them on a daily basis. And, you know, literally this morning, I was talking to different babysitters and tutors. Yeah, it's just, you know, we're, I think we're all going nuts is what I'm trying to say. And, and yet Lou hit the nail on the head. We have to stay flexible and dynamic. That's just where we are. And I, I think that the presentation today, as Jeremy Gallin pointed out, was great. We've got our three options. It certainly felt today as, as if, you know, kind of the all-in option was all, kind of all full steam ahead. You know, we're going to try to make that happen. But, you know, again, as Lou pointed out, that may change in a week. That may change in 10 days. And so I, I think that one of the things we're struggling with as a community is this necessity to nail an answer. When I think in the back of all of our minds, we know it's not, we can't do it. We don't have an answer. And so we're struggling under that tension constantly, like on a, I struggle on it, not on a daily basis, on like an hourly basis. I'm struggling with it myself. So I think we all need to just go a little bit easier on each other, realizing we're going to disagree on what some of these points are. And so that's all that said, and I think we really need a dynamic, you know, kind of like the Air Force, the Army use their debrief. You know, every day there's a debrief, what worked, what didn't, what are we going to do going forward? I think we, we need something. I've said that before at several meetings. I'll say it again. I think it's critical. I think the learning process is more important than the answer right now. And I think we just have to get better at communicating, you know? I, I feel like some parents feel like they haven't, you know, been communicated. I'm not really pointing the finger at anyone here. It's just not, it's not that easy, right? I mean, we all want to scapegoat, this leader could have done this better and now it's all messed up. Or that building leader could have done this better and now it's messed up. Or, you know, this, I mean, I've been out in the community and I've even heard like, this set of parents has been so darn vocal that it's screwed up now the decision-making process in the district, you know? Parent groups are going after each other. Teachers are going after parents behind the scenes. They're not saying it very vocally, but, you know, some parents are going after teachers. It's everyone has an idea about how someone is screwing up and I get it and I understand it. So all that said, I think, you know, we have done some great things with communicating. We have to continue to get better. And this is a communicate, this kind of communication is not, I'll just put it right out there. You know, I work in kind of more, you know, private sector companies where you got to, this stuff is moving fast or you, you get your lunch eaten, you're out of business. And it's just, it drives, it drives a necessity for crystal clear communication all the time. I don't think that education has grown up that way. Education has been a plodding industry for very good reason. There's lots of great things that are steady. And it's the first time that an educational, public education has had, has had to deal with this. I think we've got to cut all of each other some slack here and just figure out, okay, tomorrow, how do we get better? And tomorrow, how do we get better? How do we improve communication? But it all comes down to test and learn, test and learn, test and learn. That's what we're doing. I think that's what we're going to do in the first week, second week, third week. Hey, if we can get to a place where the teachers feel comfortable and the parents feel comfortable and the administrators feel comfortable and the kids are learning, we're all in the building, I think we hit it out of the park. And if we don't get there, we don't get there. And that's, that's what happened. So I really want to commend Valerie and the administration and the building leaders for staying in this dance. You know, when the ground was shifting underneath you, sometimes the ground felt like water. You know, the teachers, I get it, feeling a degree of frustration right now. Feeling as though, you know, hey, am I walking kind of into the line of fire? And I'm going home to my family. That, that's not easy. I can imagine that. It's just not an easy thing to be feeling right now. And, you know, in their heart of hearts, I don't think any teacher on this call or anywhere in the district went into this. You know, they went in this because you like teaching kids. You want to do it. I don't think there's any teachers trying to, you know, kind of get out of that. They just want to be safe. So let's all really just appreciate each other and appreciate what everyone else is struggling with. And go through this test and learn process and do everything we can to, to pull this off. And I just, again, want to thank everyone who's been a part of this process. I think the work has been tremendous. Thank you.
Valerie, do you mind if I just speak a little bit for our Farragut Middle School teachers? Just to echo also what Lou and Amy said really articulately. They're, they're concerned and they, they have a right to be there. They're, right now, I think they're entering, you know, an unknown challenges. And, but I have to say, being the new person in the building, I am just incredibly impressed with their thoughtfulness and their dedication and their willingness to take on the, the challenge. So they, I know they want the students back in the building and they want to support their social emotional as well as their educational needs. And we, we have been doing our best to communicate and I, and to their credit, they've been a little bit, you know, along with me, we've, we've been behind the eight ball in that sense because they're catching up to brand new administrators on the protocols and, and the wonderful things about Farragut as, as well as the new schedules. So they, they've taken on a lot and, and I recognize that. So we have not had the discussion about reopening and what it would take to reopen with an all-in. We've been really just focusing on remote learning and headsets and communication and, and other aspects of, of the hybrid plan. So to their credit though, they are focused, they are dedicated, they are asking amazing questions. And, and as Lou and Amy both said, this is ever-changing and we will have those conversations and, and they will work hard. And I, I'm just already so impressed with the short time that I've got to know them and, and work with them. So I'm, I'm just energized to, to continue those conversations with them. And I know that they do want the students back in the building. We, we all do. And we'll work together on a timeline for that.
I, I just wanted to make a, a comment. I think, I think my thoughts on this are a little bit different than, not necessarily the whole board, but, but a little bit different than the majority of the board. I, I'm not thrilled when I see us racing to get all in right away. And the reason is, and this is something that I just think is an important kind of way to think about this, is that I hear a lot of parents saying that we, we should be innovative. We should be, you know, we should be ahead of the curve. This is a chance to reimagine education and we should be, you know, out ahead. And, you know, I'm all for that. That's why I joined the board. But I, I personally don't think this is the time to be innovative. I personally think that it doesn't hurt to spend a couple of weeks observing every other district and letting them make the mistakes. And then we, we learn from the other districts. We're watching Georgia and Florida, all these mistakes. And everyone keeps saying, well, we're, we're New York, it's different here, the infection rates are low. In three weeks, I'll be able to say, yeah, you're right, Dobbs Ferry, Irvington, Ardsley, you know, they haven't had any problems. Or we'll go, hey, there was a spike in Ardsley. Isn't it good that we slowed down? And I think that's really important to just think about because I understand, especially for the younger grades, maybe there's a way to do it for kindergarten, first grade, second grade, but, but I, I don't understand what the difference is between waiting three weeks and, and watching how it goes in other districts and being ahead of the curve. I, I don't think that in the big picture of even this year, being there first is going to make a difference. And that desire, I see it on Facebook all the time, that these parents that are asking us to be ultra innovative. There's a difference between being innovative and walking into a, a school in the middle of a pandemic and being innovative from a big picture, what are we reimagining the schools to be? So I just wanted to throw that out there because that's the way I view this. And, you know, I don't know, others thoughts on that, but, but I would love to watch other But I would love to watch other districts and see how they do, and then make our decisions based on that.
Thank you, Jeremy. Are there any other board comments regarding this presentation that Valerie shared with us?
And just one more thing from just the standpoint of, you know, the other group of people represented here. I mean, it hasn't been any very enjoyable being in a position where no matter what you do is wrong. I mean, that's universal. I mean, you know, on any given hour of the day, you know, either it's, damn it, Valerie, you screwed this up, or Valerie, hooray, you did a great job. So, you know, you talk about morale of teachers. You need to think about the morale of the leaders, you know, who get kicked, get their teeth kicked out every day. You know, whether they try to do what they're doing from a moral imperative, that it's, we love what we do as well and love the children, and we want everyone to be safe. And then we get just, you know, beaten the down to death, you know? And I hope that there's some compassion for the position that the building leaders are in, that Joe and Maureen, you know, Laura and KESPA, Drew, you know, everyone here, Jeanette, who's doing our best. We're not your enemy. You know, and though I think, you know, I feel like I'm facing my enemies. And it's a horrible, you know, it's a horrible feeling. So I just wanted to express that.
I appreciate you saying that, Valerie. I don't think, I can't speak for all of the attendees on this meeting, nor everyone in our community. But I can say that all this, this heightened level of uncertainty has really pushed people to a place of intense self-interest, to a place where, you know, I think Doug pointed out, different factions of the community are, you know, voicing their, you know, discomfort about others in the community. And certainly, the thing that I saw evident, in particular on my walkthrough in the facilities today, but then also yesterday in my attendance at the first superintendent's conference day to open up the school year. Certainly, I certainly feel that those, the leaders in our buildings, the staff, the faculty, the cleaners, the clerical workers, that folks are here for our students, and they're here for their safety first. And I think that that was entirely evident to me. I feel like it needs to be a reminder to the community that is, that has been and will be the launching off point, and no matter what type of learning we have this year, that safety is our priority. But then engaged and happy students and learning environments are layered on top of that. So certainly, I want all those listening on the call to know that, you know, I take what Valerie's saying to heart. Certainly, you know, we can all do better at communicating our needs and knowing that the folks in our district are working with the best interest in mind, which is that of our students.
So before we move on, I want to also say something. Valerie, I hear, I hear what you said, and I hope that, just want to put in the context of what I said, that I very much appreciate what you, Maureen, Melissa, Joe, the administrators, the custodial staff, I mean, what people have done, the endless hours and plans, and people behind the scenes like Fee. Obviously, I'm leaving out people. But I deeply appreciate what people have been through and everything changing on a dime, just looking at what you put in the presentation of all the different changes that came down from the state every day, practically every other day, about what we had to do. And I'm not here to say that I don't, I am not in, very much appreciate what people have done. And I don't envy you at all. And, or people, or parents who have kids in school now. I think it's really a nightmare in many ways. Certainly a bad dream that I wish we could just wake up from. But I do have to tell you that as a board member, I also feel like I can't not say something if I have a question or there's something that I need to know about. I try not to challenge often, but I just feel like there are times where it's my obligation as a board member to speak up about things if I have questions about them. But having questions doesn't mean not being appreciative. And I just want to be clear that I very much appreciate what people have been doing. And, yeah.
Thank you, Jody. We do, I know have a lot of participants in this meeting, and I would like to keep us moving forward because I know a number of community members wanted to share their own comments. So if, would it be, I think we're ready to move on to the other pieces of the administrative comments. Melissa Samansky, would you like to go ahead?
Sure, and I'll truncate my comments. I just wanted everyone to know that, you know, we are back in and have been working very closely with vendors and the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center Model Schools team to plan for professional learning. Some of it happened today, some of it will be ongoing. That will continue to focus on signature practices that we've designed, Zoom, Google Meet, NearPod. I'd like to thank Peter Scotch, Diana Clark, and Shannon Mulholland, who joined part of the planning process for that with the Lyric team. We have lots of new web-based applications that we have been fortunate to purchase to support student learning in all different models, actually. So these resources can be useful in many different ways. I was able to, oh, I definitely don't want to thank, forget to thank Janice. Janice Mateo Toledo and the entire E&amp;L department for providing some faculty workshops that are centered around strategies and support for English language learners. And also thank you to the building leaders to coordinate DASSA training for all members of the faculty, which is something that occurs annually. New professionals orientation took place on Friday. We did have one new teacher who was involved in that process, and we focused on curriculum instruction assessment, APPR, purchasing practices, frontline e-school data, IEP and 504 plan-related matters. So very, very happy to have had the opportunity to do that this year. And then finally, I do want to publicly congratulate, thank, and recognize four members of our wonderful faculty for 25 years of service to Hastings. That's Laura Rubino, Dennis Kylie, Maria Gunther, and our very own glue that holds us all together, Maureen Caraballo.
So are you devilous? Okay. So I'm gonna make my acceptance speech now. No, I'm kidding.
Very good, you have a monument coming.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm gonna also keep my comments brief. I just want to provide a little bit of an update on our capital project. The roof walls around the Farragut roof here that will need to be addressed, we believe in the next week or so, we'll see that scaffolding being assembled on the, on the back of the building. And we will make sure to send something out to the neighbors just so they know when exactly the dates of that work, when that'll be occurring. And that'll allow them to start the repair of the wall that surrounds the roof that we've been talking about. So the other work, the Hillside flooring project is close to completion. And also, the roofing project at Hillside is about 95% complete. So they're doing some finishing work there, and we're happy that they'll be moving along. In terms of our Farrag, excuse me, the Hillside Building Addition Project, we are anticipating, finally, our building permit for that project. Unfortunately, because of COVID, many schools and many projects were delayed extensively at the state level. But we are nearing the end of that process, and we anticipate that we'll be receiving that shortly. And at that point, once we receive that approval, that is when we'll anticipate putting that project out for bid and, you know, starting that work sometime in the end of October. I just wanted to provide the board an update on the discussion that we've been having around the field usage and aftercare programs at Hillside. So for the fall, what Joe and I are recommending is that both Hastings Little League and ASO, who have both provided a request for building permit for use of the fields, they are, as we've been speaking about, they are allowed to operate under the state's guidelines. And they, all organizations have presented to us their internal COVID guidelines and in running their leagues. The Hastings Little League did use the Burke baseball field this summer, and we felt as though they were very respectful. And we felt as though they did a good job in making sure they were enforcing what the protocols that they did have. So we, Joe and I would feel comfortable making the recommendation for both of those groups to issue their building permit. And part of it, not only have they, they've demonstrated that they are adhering and following not only our normal protocols, but the COVID-related safety protocols. Both of these groups do provide us insurance. They're, they communicate with us, they use the fields, and we know when they're there. And we're able to also, we have a procedure in which we would, we clean the dugouts, and they do pay us for that service after their use. What we have been experiencing, as many of you are aware, we have a lot of outside groups that are not permitted that actually use our property. And actually, that is a far larger challenge for us than having these groups that are internal to our town, and they are providing us the correct insurance, and also waivers in terms of the COVID protocol. So our recommendation is to issue those permits and have them start. And again, we, you know, have worked with them for years. And in terms of our aftercare programs, both Add Water and Stir, as well as Aspire, have, they've also developed their own internal protocols. They both attend meetings with like Child Care Council of Westchester, and they have developed protocols, and they are happy to be welcomed back. And they are submitting their permits for use. The one item that in the hybrid model, and again, we spoke about having them come back when actually students were in, whether in hybrid or when there's some students in the building, and they understand that. And what they did request is a possibility of in the hybrid model using the building Wednesday afternoons. And I think we are considering allowing that. And again, it would not be all day, but it would be toward the end of the day, 3:30 to 6 o'clock time slot. So we are moving forward with having them back in the building as well. And working, Joe is working with them to provide larger and suitable spaces for the program they're looking to operate. And that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Did board members have any comments or questions for Melissa or Maureen? I see that Sophia is on the call. Did you want to share a student report?
Yes. Well, first, high school students received our schedules last week, which was really exciting. Big thanks to guidance for helping us make last-minute changes and fitting everything we wanted into our schedules. It's also been exciting to hear from my teachers. I've started getting emails and Google Classroom invites. And on Google Classroom, you can see which other students are in your class. So that's been really exciting to know that school is happening in some way. Second, last year, my fellow juniors and I kept saying to each other, at least we're not seniors, and now we're seniors. But a few weeks ago, my fellow student union members and I gave out customized senior shirts to nearly every senior, which is exciting. Usually, we wear them on the first day of school. This year, we'll wear them on, we'll wear them on the first day of school, whatever it is. Next, the peer leadership program, which in the high school is a program where a senior's mentor freshman is happening. We're going to be meeting the freshmen at orientation on Thursday, which is also exciting. Third, clubs have started outreach to other students, especially freshmen, to try to get new members. Especially the academic challenge team has been emailing freshmen, trying to get new recruits for our team. Everyone's excited to get back to school and see our teachers and our friends and our classmates. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. It is really great to hear that you're hearing from friends, making, reaching out to new students who are freshmen, and also hearing from teachers. So thank you. We have now come to public comment. I want to remind, if you're making a public comment, to state your name. If you're a resident of Hastings, and to keep your comments to three minutes. Janine is going to let you know your order of speaking. It's also in the agenda if you've already contacted her. If you're on the call now and wanted to make a public comment, you can email her during the meeting to speak at the second public comment, and it's jenhourj@hohschools.org. And Janine will be keeping time and kindly interrupting if you're exceeding that three-minute mark just because we do have a number of folks who'd like to share their thoughts with us this evening. Thanks.
So we'll begin with Alisa Cowan. Are you on the call?
Yes, hi, I'm here. Should I just jump in? Hi, good evening, members of the board, administrators, and fellow Hastings community members. I'm here tonight to address the board in support of opening our schools for full-time in-person instruction. I'm now encouraged by this board and this administration in their efforts to consider this measure publicly and act more concretely towards reaching that goal. I have deep respect, admiration, and appreciation for the parents, educators, administrators, and board members that have devoted their time and energy to this community, including their willingness to listen, learn, and change course when called for. We had heard time and again that in-person instruction was a priority. But what we hadn't heard until tonight was a fully-realized roadmap of how to get there. Thank you, Dr. Henning Piedmont and Ms. Cases, for making headway in this regard. And I would ask that the board ask this administration to communicate those plans more widely as soon as possible. In support of this goal to open schools full-time in person, I want to reiterate how we got to this moment. In the face of an unprecedented crisis last spring, Hastings rose to the occasion and did what was necessary. We closed the doors to our businesses, our homes, and our schools. We did all that so we could get here. Less than 1% infection rate consistently since June. We did all of those things in order for our kids to at least have a chance to get back to school for however long that can last. Because the virus hasn't gone away, that's true, and we must continue to be vigilant. But we are not wandering in the wilderness any longer. We have data and science and medical knowledge of how this awful virus is transmitted, and also how it is not. But we must be guided by fact-based planning and not by fear or feelings or even consensus. This approach is owed to our youngest children who are suffering for lack of developmentally appropriate instruction and interaction. It is owed to our families who have lost jobs and wages either permanently or temporarily. And we owe it to our essential workers, healthcare workers, and our teachers, many of whom are facing challenges regarding care and schooling for their own children. Our families, my own included, are at their breaking points, both emotionally and financially. And in this moment, we have an obligation to lift them up. We are incredibly fortunate to live in a community that has the financial, personnel, and community stakeholder resources to carefully consider the health and safety of our community. And if there's one thing we can all agree on, it is that the people in Hastings care deeply. But more than caring and engagement, we are able to pay for disinfecting supplies, PPE, desk partitions, HVAC audits, safety consultants, and now purchasing and constructing additional barriers. We have checked all of the boxes required by the state to reopen. So I'm asking this board again to continue to press this administration to more widely address the district's families by answering the pressing question of what are the internally imposed benchmarks and milestones that would be required to get us there and when they are expected to be achieved? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Brian Jacobs.
Hi, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So good evening, everyone. Brian Jacobs, my wife and I have a sixth grader and a third grader. We made a long made a long plan, moved to Hastings in April, so we're new to the neighborhood and the schools. I just wanted to thank everyone on the board and all of the Hastings faculty and staff for all of the extremely hard work everyone's doing behind the scenes, getting ready for the coming year. I wanted to speak just very briefly to emphasize our perspective as new residents and to voice our support for the sort of full-time in-person reopening you described on this call. From the perspective of people who just moved here, it's really hard for any child to start a new school, but it's even harder in a mask and behind barriers. And on top of that, attending just two days a week, as in the hybrid model that was talked about earlier this summer. At the end of the last year at our old school, the remote school was extremely hard for our kids, even with classmates and teachers. They knew that they knew well in the city. And we'd been very concerned that the hybrid model with just two days a week in person would be extremely isolating for them and for any other new kids who are, you know, here for the first time in this community. So while, you know, we of course understand all of the risks and the real concerns people have and that we ourselves have. We're just very glad to see the phase-in plan for full-time reopening that was just described and really do think it strikes the right balance. We really appreciate the chance to speak. I want to reiterate again how much we appreciate how hard you all are working on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is David Bates on the call?
Hi, yeah, I'm, I'm here. Thanks. I also just want to thank the board and the superintendent and all the school leaders for giving us a chance to make comments tonight. I had prepared tonight some comments to express my support for full opening of schools, not knowing that it would be announced tonight. So I will pivot a little bit since that's what we're doing now. I do just want to say, listening to everyone talk tonight, Dr. Henning Piedmont, especially when you gave that presentation at the beginning of all the different changes that have come down the pipeline for regulations and guidance from the state, I can't imagine how stressful this probably has been for everybody and how you've had to adapt and change on the fly so much. It's almost like trying to play a game, but the rules are rewritten every week or every few days. So thank you all for, for all of your hard work. It's very much appreciated by the, by the town. What I was going to say, and I'll just summarize much more briefly now in case there, those who still have concerns about reopening, it's, it's certainly, there's no perfect time to reopen. But if we had a close second, it might be now. Last week, a group of physicians and healthcare workers, which I was a part of, sent a letter to the school board, the teachers' union and everyone, just outlining some key points why we feel it is a good time to, to open, which Alyssa also mentioned some of those. But namely, with the low infection rate, the risk of infection is, that's sort of the best thing that we have in order to make an attempt at a full opening. And with PPE and those barriers, it's, this is really the, the best opportunity since there may not be a vaccine ever. We don't know. We hope there will be, but we don't know. So this may be our best shot to try full reopening. Obviously, we have to pivot if we, if we see cases rise. The other thing that we were mentioned in our letter was that we feel that a full reopening is in some ways safer than a hybrid reopening. If you remain hybrid for a long time, when kids are on their days off, they're going to probably be in a patchwork of childcare with teenagers or babysitters or grandparents. So that if numbers did go up in the community, it would be harder to contain that once you realize that cases were up. So anyways, thank you all for, for your efforts. We moved here a few years ago, having never been here, really, never lived here, because we heard the schools were so great and all the people working in it have really shown that the last six months. And I really appreciate what you've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next speaker is Beth Potius. Potius?
Yeah, Potius. Hi. My name is Beth Potius and I have a seventh grader and a third grader. And I just want to thank the administration and the board of ed. I know how busy you are and I've always been appreciative that you've listened to my feedback in the past and you've personally addressed my concerns. And thank you now again for allowing me to voice my concerns. I am speaking tonight to advocate for safe in-person learning five days a week and I'm thrilled to hear, I did not realize until this phone call that this was a possibility. And it seems that now, given all the information we have about the data and about what resources are available to the school, it is the safest time to implement in-person learning. And I'm asking that the administration at least try to, to do that and see remote learning as the last resort. Attempt the best possible scenario for the children and then step it down if it's not sustainable in a safe manner. And I just want to reiterate that parents are not expecting perfect. We just want the administration to try to make an effort to implement as many in-days as possible. And for example, my daughter went to Oasis Day Camp and they were eight to four. And it, you know, I was just grateful that they made an effort and sometimes they had it closed because it was too hot, but parents don't expect perfect and they understand if there's glitches and it's a trial and error process to see what works in terms of bringing the kids in. And it, we just appreciate making the effort and to just not dismiss it if it, if it seems too difficult. And I'm really so grateful that it, that, that of the latest plans. And I also just wanted to give my perspective as a working parent and a parent of elementary school child and a middle school age child who happens to have a hard time focusing. The remote learning days have been and will take an emotional, social, financial and academic toll on my family. The way the remote schedule is set up, it's really impossible to get work done as an adult is required to facilitate and also participate in the schooling. As a result, unless we leave our jobs, I have to now hire someone during the three days when the kids would normally be in school. So now on top of the enormous financial burden, by hiring people to help me or sending the kids to supervise daycare settings, working parents are almost penalized in that they have to take the risk that their kids will be exposed to more people than they normally would be had they just gone to school. And academically speaking, just my children personally were not engaged at all during remote learning. And I believe that the district will have to make up for months of regression if they do not implement in-person learning. And the teachers will have more work as a result of some kids not retaining the curriculum during the remote days versus the ones that were sent to pods five days a week. Where they received the five days a week in-person school. And socially speaking, my family, my children already felt extremely isolated, not to mention the social implications on families like mine, where I found myself working at-
Beth, we're gonna have to wrap up. I'm sorry.
Okay. I would work at midnight, so to make sure that my kids didn't flounder. And I just said that the hybrid plan is just simply unsustainable for us. And thank you for considering full in-person learning.
Thank you very much. Nancy Dodson?
Hi, my name's Nancy Dodson. I'm a mother in the district with three kids, two of whom are in Hillside. I, I guess I'm imagining that the teachers today are feeling a lot of conflicted emotions and apprehension. And I just wanted to speak to them as a someone who worked in a hospital in the Bronx through the pandemic. I'm a pediatrician, but my children's hospital was emptied out and converted to a, an adult COVID hospital where I was briefly taking care of very elderly people. And through that experience, I just want to offer three thoughts of comfort to them because I know how they're feeling right now. They're feeling the way I felt in March and April. The first thought that I wanted to share, the first realization is that PPE really, really works. I take COVID very seriously. My hospital lost, I think, 21 staff members to COVID. But everyone who got sick from COVID were people who worked before masking and PPE were universally worn by both staff and patients. By the time we all went to work, we had face shields, we had masks and patients wore masks. And I didn't know a single person who got sick after March or April and we worked the entire time. In fact, all of our antibody testing was negative, meaning that we didn't even get exposed and stay asymptomatic. We just were protected by PPE. We know a lot that we didn't know then. We know that coronavirus doesn't travel through surgical masks. It doesn't travel through face shields. It certainly doesn't travel through plexiglass. We know that it doesn't act like measles, which kind of like drifts through the whole room and stays there for hours. It's much more containable than that. And we know that children, even when they carry the virus, don't transmit it the way that they do the flu or, or the common cold, because they don't shed it from their respiratory tract. And we also know that doctors and nurses overall have lower rates of COVID than the general population because we take PPE very seriously. And so I think as teachers are becoming the new essential workers, if they take PPE seriously too, everyone will be protected. The second point is that COVID has been quieted to a whisper in New York. I just want to remind us how far we've come. Death rates in March and April were upwards of 700 or 800 people per day in our state. And if you remember the term flatten the curve, our only goal was to decrease the pandemic in the state to keep hospitals able to function. But we didn't just flatten the curve. We, we actually crushed it. After signing up for shifts, I had COVID shifts booked for months. And after a few days, the hospital shut them all down because, because our rates improved so drastically. Yesterday, there were only three people in the state who died from COVID and the day before that, there was one person. And I think that's because, you know, we were New Yorkers. We were very neurotic and we took our, our social distancing and mask wearing so seriously that we just gave the virus nowhere to go. Even with summer camps and relaxed quarantining throughout the summer, rates have only decreased throughout the entire summer. So I think that New York kids have a special privilege of being literally the only kids in the country who can safely go back. And that's because of our sacrifice. The last point, I hope I'm not talking too quickly, but the last point is just, I want to tell the teachers that it's very scary now, but I think that fear is going to be replaced with pride and camaraderie. You know, I was terrified and my husband, we were just terrified of going to work and we literally, we had fears of leaving our kids without hair. I'm sorry, you have to wrap up. Thank you. I can wrap up. But teacher, but what we found was that we experienced a sense of camaraderie and pride in being essential workers. And I think teachers are now essential workers. And that they will feel that way too, and a great sense of community. Thank you. And I'm sorry I ran over.
Thank you very much. No, we appreciate your thoughts. Lauren Dolch? Is Lauren on the line? Okay, we can come back to her. Rachel Ratcliffe?
Hi, I'm here. Hi, everybody. Sorry about late. I want to start by saying thank you so much to Valerie and Melissa and everyone. I work in a school also and I know what it's like and how you're inundated with emails and, and that we all think of our own kids' best interest and our own family's best interest. And that you're weighing not just each individual's best interest, but all the stakeholders in the community. And you're seeing what all of them want and you have to find some sort of compromise between the teachers and the building administrators and the parents who want one thing and the parents who want another thing. And that's no easy task. It's a huge burden. And having to do that also with the rules changing all the time, I really appreciate how hard you've had to work this summer and how flexible you've been able to, to be and how lucky we are to have leadership like that. And I, I really hope that the community understands how lucky we are to have this leadership and can show their appreciation. I originally was going to talk about wanting, an argument for wanting five-day in-person school. So I'm also going to pivot a little bit and just speak to a few things that I heard that I would like to, to talk about, which is, I agree, we need to be flexible, right? So all of us want, especially as parents, right? We want a plan where we know like our kids are doing this and like this is our schedule for the year. And unfortunately, we're not going to be able to have that, right? So hopefully we can all go in person, but if there is a case or transmission or something like that, we need to be able to switch. And I think that it's really nice that our administration sees that, that they understand that everything is a work in progress. And that we just have to be flexible. So I appreciate that. I also think that much like Nancy just said, teachers are essential workers. I don't think we're becoming essential workers. I think we are essential workers because it's essential to have an educated population who can do their civic duty and who can make good educated thoughts. And so as a teacher myself, I think that we, we need to go back. I think that, you know, I've spoken a lot to my friends, because a lot of my friends who are teachers are nervous about going back and there's very few jobs. There, there aren't jobs where you can say, I really don't feel comfortable going back, make an exception for me. And I think that we as teachers have such a responsibility to some of the most vulnerable people in the population that we can't ask for that accommodation. We really need to be there for our students to help them with their social, emotional growth, with their learning, how to negotiate, how to work together, because these are the skills that we want them to have as adults that they learn now. I also think that as a teacher, teaching remotely is not how we're taught to teach. So I think that if we were taught for all of our time to teach that, we could do an amazing job. And I think the teachers who had no experience doing it did a very good job, some of them in March, April, May, June, because they had no training in it. And I think that if we want to do the best by our kids, we want our teachers to use their best practices. And we want our students to use their best practices. And those students have been trained to learn in a school. They haven't been trained to learn on a computer.
I'm sorry, Rachel, we need you to complete your overtime. Thanks.
Sorry, that's all.
Okay. Our next person is Louise Mullen. Mullen, is Louise on the line?
Okay. I'm right here.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks very much. I'd like to thank the administration on the board and community members that are participating in this BOE meeting. First and foremost, I just wanted to commend the unbelievable efforts by the school administration and all the staff in trying to make 100% in-person teaching happening. Myself as well, I came to this meeting thinking I would be petitioning for this to happen, but I was surprised and very happy to hear that this actually may be a reality. I wanted to speak to the psychological impact that this pandemic has had on our lives, both as parents, teachers, hospital administrators and professionals. First of all, I'd actually like to speak about the teachers. I can't really imagine how stressful this has been for teachers. That's, you know, one of the reasons why we moved to this district is because it's such a fantastic school district. We knew that teachers were heavily invested in the community and in the children that they saw throughout the school system. Navigating a sudden change to remote, which happened in the spring, must have been an absolute nightmare for teachers. You know, the laying open of their teaching styles on video sessions to parents and other family members must have been very difficult. And assessing learning needs during the spring, during the spring through a Google Classroom or a Zoom session must have been very, very difficult. So I want to first of all acknowledge that. And I hope that the school district has some provision for the emotional support of teachers, both in, you know, navigating the challenges of going back into school and the attendant fears that come with that, that Nancy actually has spoken to. You know, it's interesting, my sister-in-law is a high school French teacher. And we were out for a run recently and she said to me, you know, I didn't sign up for this. And what was interesting about that statement was that it echoed what my sister said about four months ago. She's also a physician like myself. But it was before the physicians were, had access to PPE. And, you know, they were in a situation where, yeah, we took the oath to practice medicine, but, you know, with precautions if, if possible. And so now that we have PPE, we know that it's actually relatively difficult to contract current acquirers with PPE. I'd like to just extend an understanding that teachers must feel vulnerable, but that with requisite protections, they'll be seen. Psychological impact on kids. I treat teens and young adults and I can speak anecdotally about how there's been a massive uptick in anxiety and depression in these kids. Or an exacerbation of serious symptoms of illness. It just further underscores the-
Can you wrap up please?
Sure, sure. It further underscores the need for kids to be back with their teachers who are an essential, provide essential mentorship and education for our kids. And again, I just highly commend the administration's efforts to make this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is Mei Li on the line?
Hi, hi, everybody. My name is Mei Li. I'm also, I'm a parent of two, one of whom is in Hillside. Also, a lot of my points have actually already been said, so I will keep mine even briefer. I want to thank Dr. Henning Piedmont and the rest of the school administration for the building services for all their incredible hard work, commitment to sort of keeping our kids educated in what's obviously unprecedented circumstances. I'm also here because I want to express my full support. I'm also here because I want to express my full support of all the efforts that the school and board and administration and superintendent are making to return our students, especially our youngest learners, back to school in person, full-time. So just briefly, I'm an emergency medicine physician. I work in Manhattan. I've been a frontline worker throughout the pandemic. My husband is an internist. He worked on the inpatient COVID floors in the Bronx during the peak. And we both certainly saw our fair share of suffering in the hospital, particularly in March and April. But we've also learned so much about what everybody's been saying about sort of how to keep ourselves, how to keep our community safe. We've seen all the hard work that Hastings has done, that Westchester, that New York City has done, and we now have, you know, one of the lowest infection rates in the country. So, and just anecdotally speaking, Matt, my husband's back on the inpatient unit now, on his roster of 30 patients, does not have one COVID-positive patient. But also, when you just look at the data, sort of what Nancy was saying, we've not only flattened the curve, we've crushed the curve. And because we've done that, it's time that I think we reap the rewards of all that hard work. And I believe that there's no greater payoff for everything that we've sacrificed and that New York has sacrificed than having our kids back in school with the proper safety measures in place, as outlined today, so that they can benefit psychologically, socially, emotionally, academically, because there really is no substitute to in-person learning. And briefly, just to teachers and staff who I know are nervous about possible exposure, I completely empathize. But I know that staying safe while providing an essential service, because again, I do think educating our kids is as essential as giving healthcare, you know, to patients and the community, is really essential, and I really think it can be done, and I believe we can do this. So, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much for those words. Is Kate Janowski on the line?
Yeah. Kate? Good evening, we're here to be a representative of the community administration. Again, several times on this issue over the last, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you again. I echo the comments that I've already expressed this evening, and I am deeply appreciative of the attention the administration and the board have given our concerns and the desire to reopen fully, safely, as soon as possible. And tonight's presentation makes my husband Alex and I feel heard. In addition to the dates and the rollout, much more important is that we have a clearly shared goal of reopening full-time with benchmarks of what is needed in order to accomplish that short goal, and a clear statement of what those safety metrics by the city are and how they are interpreted by this district and how they will be implemented. My comment is that in so many, our commitment to reopening the schools full-time, we are equally committed to keeping them open successfully. This community has resources and able members. Mrs. Case has mentioned additional monitors. There may be other staffing needs. Parents in the district, which is typical, have offered to feeling to ask where appropriate. If there is a need and an opportunity for community volunteers, I hope the district would not hesitate. Similarly, if there is an opportunity to improve, as we, similarly, if there is an opportunity to improve as we move throughout the year. Mr. Sun-Tang talked about test learn. If years of effort would be really great to have X, tent chillers, when it gets colder, whatever it might be, as schools change and the area, or change of your background, want to bring hay, or funds needed for petitions that are parent on all three sides, will be wishful. Other than regular opportunities are present. We're very happy and optimistic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Erica Sterson?
Yeah.
Erica?
Hi, I'm here. First of all, thank you so much to everybody. I'm sure that you all feel like you've been having your ideas ticked in for the last three months, and I really appreciate everything you're doing, and you're never-
No, I'm not texting anyone, no.
Can you hear me?
Yes, could everyone mute themselves, please?
Okay.
Erica, you can start over again.
Oh, that's what, I was just thanking everybody. I'm sure it's been a very difficult job, and I don't want to take up too much time. I would like to say that I fully support the full-time in-person reopening, so I am extremely grateful to hear the presentation. I wanted to speak a little bit about if and when we do need to pivot. I am a parent of Hillside, two Hillside elementary students. I have a first grader and a fourth grader. And I heard earlier in the presentation, Amy spoke about elementary school-age children as all being considered high need. And so I would just like to throw out to the administration and to the board that if we were to need to pivot in the future, would it be possible to just consider what it would be like for children who are in school five days to then move to a two-day-on, three-day-off model, and what type of consistency, or rather, lack of consistency that would bring, in particular for the youngest learners, the K in first and even second graders? If it would be possible to reconsider an alternate plan for a future remote learning option for the youngest learners in the district, to provide more consistency with in-person learning, even if it was for shorter periods of time, where they could learn like reading, writing, and math in person, and then do a special online? I know that right now, all focus is on what's in front of us, which is full in-person learning, and I support that. I'm very happy for it. Just wanted to put out there that it would be great if we could just think about what would a transition to remote or hybrid learning look like for the elementary school in a way that would be, provide more consistency and maximize in-person instruction. That's it.
Thank you very much for those thoughts. All right, let's see. Is Amy Nichols on the line?
Yes, hello. I really appreciate hearing from everyone. Everyone's very thoughtful and valid concerns and comments. I'm, just want to put out there, as we're thinking about what we're going to do, that to remember that the health well-being and educational experience of our children is like fully contingent on the health well-being and buy-in of our teachers and staff. And so even if, and I'm really heartened to hear the medical professionals on this call talking about, you know, that the risk is much, much lower, but even if so, do they think that the measures that are in place are actually going to provide a rich educational experience for our students who are both in-person and at home, as my children will be? And making sure that they feel safe, they feel valued, their voice is heard. So I really have appreciated that conversation about them. So thank you to those of you who have brought that up as well. And I'm also thinking about the fact that all of these measures are temporary, you know, where I think sometimes it can feel like we're just deciding what school is now. And hopefully, the safer we are, the more temporary it will be. And, but I, my concern now is that the teachers feeling truly valued and heard and respected that piece, if there's damage there, that could be long-lasting. So I just want to make sure that their voices are really being prioritized, their needs are really being prioritized, their health and well-being as we move forward in the decisions we're making. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is Rebecca Weston on the line?
Hi, I'm here. I just wanted to speak a little bit from a very different perspective. And while I'm certainly grateful to the Board of Ed and for the district for having to sort of marshal all of the data and resources and everything else, I come from a very different perspective. I appreciate deeply the work of this community, the entire community, not just the administrators in the district, in trying to understand how to move forward most safely. I think it's actually been a huge community effort, in addition to the people who are elected and also paid to work on this. I have to say, though, that as much as I'm extremely proud of this community for getting, being part of getting us down to the 1% or lower than 1% infection rate, I don't think that it's realistic to imagine that we are in a bubble and that it will stay that way. We are seeing in SUNY Oneonta, and we're seeing in various other schools already infections breaking out. And as much as I didn't particularly like the hybrid plan, because it does not offer very much remote options for people, I am even more concerned about a full reopening. I don't believe it is based in the science. It's primarily through air transmission that we understand that. It is age-differentiated, so if people are wanting to have more in-school, I can understand that for younger than 10-year-old kids. And it's also not socially distanced. And what I'm understanding is that now kids are going to be going in full-time. I don't know what message they're possibly going to receive from this, other than that it's safe all over the place to be full-on, no social distancing or in any other context. We are going to ultimately give kids tremendous double messages, and this is exactly how the virus spreads. It spreads all over the country, and it's not something we can easily foresee. And finally, I also know that the board understands this. I have clear communication from people in the district that without testing, without mandatory testing, it's not safe. I've gotten personal communications from various people in the district knowing that, and so I'm a little bit appalled that we are representing this to be a safe situation. I do believe that people also signed up when they did the survey, saying that they wanted some remote options. This is completely ignoring all of those people who wanted some remote options, and I'm not hearing anything about a remote solution for the people who are also going to be feeling unsafe. I also want to say, finally, that the teachers' unions in New York and the nurses' unions in New York have come out strongly against full reopening, because they don't believe it's safe. I don't quite understand why we can't stagger a reopening to see how it goes before we go straight from remote to full reopening. That does not make any sense to me. It's ultimately all I have to say. And I guess finally, just a bit about the process. There have been tremendous efforts to make our opinions known in all sorts of different ways. I have to say that it has not felt completely dialogic. It has felt as though the chats have been shut down. It has felt as though the petitions have literally gotten not acknowledged, emails have not been received, communications have not been responded to. I hear people saying, thank you for the communications. That does not feel completely sincere to me. It has felt very one-sided. And I'm sorry that that's my opinion. I'm also a newcomer to this community, and I know that I'm not the only one who's feeling this way. Thanks.
Thank you, Rebecca. Is Kate Lowengart on the call?
Yes, I am. Hi. First of all, I just want to, like everybody, thank everybody who is definitely, you know, working around the clock to find solutions in this situation. It's not ideal. None of us signed up for this. And you all show up every day, presumably every night, to figure out how to make this work for our community, so thank you. You know, I'm speaking today both as a parent and as somebody who runs a local childcare program. Today, we found out that two programs in our town are not opening because of the challenges that COVID presents. And I think that everyone in this community really needs to understand more deeply what COVID is requiring of schools, what, how it's requiring every single piece of the school day to be looked at completely differently. And that's actually from a facilities perspective and from a people management perspective, and that's not even talking about how a classroom functions. What we are asking our educators to be doing in this situation is unheard of and is unprecedented. And I, for one, do not want to put my child in a situation until I know the people who educate my children are 100% comfortable with the options on the table, and that they know that my child can come into this classroom and not only be safe, but be supported and have a normal kind of school day, as close as we can get, can be learning the way that they need to. And, you know, I think we run into a danger when we start dividing up square footage by children. Children are not widgets. They do not fit into a little square on a piece of paper. They need to be able to sit on the rug with their friends. They need to be able to touch what they're learning with. They need to interact with their teachers. And our teachers are the ones that know how to make this happen best. I know that the state regulations suggest a phase-in, and like Ms. Case has mentioned, a phased-in approach is advised here. And I think you'll find that while, you know, listen, we're all in a situation where we want everything to happen immediately. But I also really ask everyone in this community to really give our educators a chance to figure this out and to find the solutions needed. And I think that the plan that you've presented really does that well. We're starting with remote, so you can get that down. We're going to bring the children in, in half groups, to see if that works. And I think we all should have full faith that the people who dedicate their lives to educating our children want every single one of our children back in the classroom. I think that that's where our teachers want to be. I think that's where our administrators want to be. But until we can get there, we all need to show a little patience here. And I do feel that it's really important for everyone to realize that the schools are not getting any state funding, they aren't getting any federal funding, and they have to solve all these problems solely in our tiny school district in our small village in our, you know, our intimate community. And so as a community, let's come together, let's rally around this plan, let's see how it goes, and let's trust the process. So thank you, everybody.
Is Nina Segal on the line?
I am. I am, thank you. Let me turn my camera on. Sorry, I, thank you, Janine. I have to say, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I actually, in full disclosure, I wasn't watching the beginning of the board meeting for the first time probably in about five years because of a medical emergency in my house, and my phone started blowing up. I had checked the agenda, and there was no discussion of this at all on it. So I think, like many friends and neighbors, have been really blindsided by this. I think that I've been tremendously supportive of the district leadership and the superintendent and the board through the spring and summer. I've really appreciated the chats, the focus groups, and the emails. I feel pretty blindsided by this, and I'm really disappointed is much too mellow of a word. I think that high school parents don't feel represented. We know that teachers are finding out about this for the first time, even though they were in the building over the last two days. They're as blindsided as we are, which, like Kate, I think is really not respecting who they are and what they bring, and concerns for their safety and how they want to teach. I don't want to put my child, like Kate and Rebecca, in a situation until I know teachers are comfortable. And we were all set to go. Not everyone was happy, but we were, we were as happy as we could be, and we really felt things were well researched. So this, I would say, leaves a really bitter taste in many of our mouths, both in terms of tremendous lack of communication and almost it sounding like a fait accompli. I would certainly, as a teacher, be disappointed if this wasn't run by me first, and, you know, my kids are as upset as I am. So, over. Really disappointed.
All right, thank you, Nina, for sharing your thoughts. Our next speaker is Lisa Costa, Costat, if she's available?
Hi, it's Constat.
Constat?
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry about that, my apologies.
That's okay. I just really wanted to reiterate what Nina said, what Rebecca said, what Jeremy said. I feel like the majority of parents who have been speaking tonight are parents of Hillside children. I don't feel that high school parents have really been represented here. I also feel that I don't understand why a one-size-fits-all has to be what happens here. I mean, all the schools are different, all the children in the schools have different developmental needs. I don't think it's appropriate for high school to have all-in. The virus spreads by aerosol, so barriers and Plexiglas shields are not going to be sufficient. You know, research has shown that high schools should be treated like offices. You know, I'm just, I agree with Nina that I think a lot of us feel pretty blindsided. We were very happy with the hybrid plan, and I just think that exactly what Jeremy said in the beginning is true. We need to take it slow. We are already seeing that numbers in colleges and places that are reopening are going up. And, you know, I just think it's really foolish to rush into this like this. And I also think that, you know, this, different schools need to be looked at differently. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Celine Flores, are you on the line?
Hi, yes, I'm on the line. I'm just going to keep it really brief and echo the last couple of comments. First of all, I'll support what everyone else has said. First of all, I'll support what everyone else has said. I can't imagine the position that administrators, the board, the teachers and everybody else has been in. So, thank you for all of your time and your hard work and for working on the enormous Rubik's Cube that is this challenge. And I just wanted to say that I really appreciated Jeremy's remarks in the beginning. And, uh, and I agree that, you know, I think a stepwise approach, I think a slow approach, I think what, um, you know, the approach that we had had of starting remote, moving on to hybrid and going from there makes a lot of sense for a small district like ours. And, uh, you know, I want to make sure that the teachers are comfortable as well. I really appreciated Kate Lowengart's comments as well. So, um, just want to echo my support for a slow and graduated approach as we all see where this new world takes us. So, thanks again for your time and for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you very much, Celine. Our next speaker, if she's available, is Melissa Goldberg.
Hi, I just wanted to quickly reiterate what some of the more recent speakers have said, including Nina and Kate and Rebecca. I really appreciated what Jeremy Arnon said earlier on. I don't think now is the time to be the innovators. I also feel completely shocked that this plan is now being discussed so close to the reopening. It really seems to me that it came out of left field. And I'm really disappointed. And I'm sort of speechless. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I just needed to say that I'm very concerned about this. And with all due respect to all the physicians who've spoken, it's wonderful for them to talk about the great PPE that they have. It's not my understanding that the teachers are going to be provided with N95 masks and gowns and goggles and all the other things that the physicians have. And, I mean, that's just obvious. They're not, they're not going to have all of those things. So, to compare it to being in any hospital where you're covered from head to toe in PPE and saying to the teachers that they should feel fine with this, I don't even know what to say about that, but that just seems unfair and unwise. And there's been a lot of focus on the safety of the teachers and not much talk about the safety of the kids. And there's still so much we don't know about this. And I don't understand why we need to rush. I don't think we need to rush. I thought that the hybrid plan was good, not perfect, but it seemed safe. And I think this is a mistake to proceed with this, this rushed approach. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you for your thoughts, Melissa. Is, I'm sorry, I'm going to pronounce your name incorrectly. Rianan Platt on the line?
Hi, Janine, hi, everybody. Again, thank you to the administrators who are here on the call tonight because I know that everybody's been spending an awful lot of time over the summer trying to get everything figured out for the return safely to school. I'm actually speaking out tonight on behalf of my 10th grader who is sitting right next to me. And, you know, she just wanted me to remind everybody, you know, these are not just the teachers that we're talking about. And as we've just heard, you know, our teachers are not qualified physicians. They are not going to be familiar or adept at using PPE within a school environment. That's not their training. That is not what we expect them to do. We expect them to teach our children. Everybody is in a very different and unexpected situation right now. And we have to adapt and we all have to learn. And I have no expectation that within the next few weeks, month, whatever it's going to be, that my kids are going to be learning the same way that they would have in prior years. And I have an eighth grader and a 10th grader. As my daughter, who is a 10th grader, points out frequently, you know, we're also talking about children who are teenagers who don't necessarily listen to what they're being told to do. They're not necessarily going to comply with mask wearing, whether they're in the bathrooms, when they're out of school, and we can see this in the district right now. Teenagers are hanging out together. They're in town without masks together. Lord knows where any of them have been hanging out necessarily this summer and with whom. But this is a bigger picture than just having a child in the Hillside for me, who can be more compliant with what they're being told to do. And I, you know, I'm concerned about rushing too quickly to get our children back into school. 100% of children in the classroom, 100% with teachers in the classroom because I'm just concerned that we are going to speed up the schools then closing down at a later date. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Is, I'm sorry, let me just check your name. Michelle Huxguard on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
I also, I hadn't prepared to speak. A lot of my colleagues has been speaking at this meeting. I just wanted to say, I, I'm a COVID researcher. I work at NYU Langone Health. I run a research lab. We've opened 350 labs during the COVID epidemics. And, you know, we, we're also not trained to work with PPE. We are not physicians. I have a lot of young people. I have students in my lab. And they have all been wearing PPE. We, we are pretty close together. We don't have barriers. No one has been gone, getting infected in our whole research community. I think people have to be very careful about stating that sign says because what people are reading is not science. They're reading an opinion of a journalist, maybe in the New York Times or other less, you know, popular journal or newspapers. But what they really should be reading is the primary research papers. If you wear PPE and if you do the proper protection, you will not get COVID. You know, there, there are many ways to protect yourself. The infection rates are very low. There's, might be a vaccine next year, but it's not going to protect 100% of everybody. You know, so even if we get a vaccine, maybe 50% is protected. Are you going to close the schools for the next three years? This is going to have a major impact on our children and their education and on society. We need to learn how to live with this virus and learn how to dance around the virus and not just be living in this fear mongering that many people are. I'm working with this virus. I know what it does. And I put myself in risk every single day. I'm very appreciative of everything that the administration and the teachers do. And I understand their concerns. But we all have to lift, to, to bring this, to bring us further from this horrible situation that we've been in. And we've worked so hard and we really deserve to have our kids in, in school. You know, I'm an essential worker. I had to go in from the beginning when there was up to 40% infection rate in New York City. And I had to go home to my kids every day. But I wore PPE, I protected myself. I take the train, I take Metro North. It's empty, but I, I take the train. So, I just ask people to, to also consider that even though the teachers, I adore them and I want them to be safe, that there are ways of protecting yourself. And the administration has done everything that they possibly should do to protect our children.
Thank you very much, Michelle.
Thank you.
Is Jen Walton on the line? Jen Walton? Okay, moving along. Faith Schwartz? Faith, are you there?
Well, I'm assuming that that's me because Faith's my daughter, but I have no idea why her name is looking through. But anyway, yeah, so my name is actually Michelle Vavoda. And I'll turn my camera, I'm sorry. I'm the mom of two Hillsiders, a fourth grader and a first grader with, who has an IEP. And I'm really, um, you know, I was, I, I just want to say that I'm, I'm among probably the, the more conflicted crew who is actually, takes some joy in the thought of my kids going back to school full-time. But, you know, I think it's only natural to have some concerns. I wanted to just share my own personal experience. So, I am an educator. I've actually been back in the classrooms. This is my fourth week now. I, I teach in, in college, in a local college in New Rochelle. And New Rochelle, which happened to be where the first COVID cases were. And, and so we, you know, our, our college made the decision to go back in person with a hybrid model. But, you know, we have some students who've decided to stay fully remote, others who are attending all their classes. And, and I just want everyone who is, you know, meeting this news with, with anxiety and for teachers who are rightfully concerned to know that, you know, I, my colleagues and I went through this exact same process over the summer. And, and even though we spent the entire summer engaged in these kinds of preparations, it never felt like it was enough. Like, we got down to the day before school and everybody just felt like we weren't ready. And, and then there was a lot of fear. And I'm just here to, you know, four weeks in now, to say that, you know, all of our students are masked and everybody is keeping their distance. And, you know, so far, things are, things are going well. And I think it's, it's just really natural to be, to be, to be concerned, of course. We're entering a phase where we've never been before. But, but, you know, we, you know, everybody is, is behaving really carefully. And I think I just want to kind of segue this into the community because I'm hearing examples of teenagers walking around without masks on and, and kids doing things that they shouldn't be doing. And I think that if our community is, if this is the decision that we're making, and again, I have a first grader with an IEP, like, this is not a child who can learn remotely. So, if we're, as a community, deciding that we're going to create learning environments that are appropriate for, at least for our youngest learners, if not for all learners, then, then we need to step up our individual responsibility as well. So, you know, I think in a community this size, there's no reason why we, we can limit the spread of this by behaving very safely as individuals. And if, you know, we're talking about respecting our teachers and wanting our teachers to feel safe, a lot of that has to do with us too and keeping our kids from, you know, making sure that they're wearing their masks and making sure that they're not engaging in, in any kind of risky behavior.
Thank you, Michelle. We need to wrap up, okay?
Yeah, I just wanted everyone to know that. I've kind of been there too, so I'm going through the same thing.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to have to stop you. Is Rafaela de la Huerta on the line? Go ahead.
Just joined the call. I didn't realize you guys would be going so late. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. And I just want to, you know, can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry. Um, yeah, no, and I just want to thank you for your service. I know this hasn't been easy for the Board of Education. There's a lot of uncertainties. You know, it seems like I'm coming in a bit late and I don't want to belabor the point. But I will say that, you know, I'm a parent of a middle schooler and a third grader in our district. I'm also an essential worker, so I'm not home during the day. And I've been concerned about the hybrid plan for a while because I feel like having the same formatting for young learners and older learners creates a lot of difficulties for young families, you know, logistical differences, learning differences. And it felt really inequitable for the younger families. So, I guess what I'm hearing now is there is a move to more in-person learning. My, my original statement that I wrote was asking the BOE to consider approaching plans differently based off the age groups with more in-person learning for younger age groups, which is better for younger children who are less self-directed and also for the families that may not be able to navigate remote learning, whether because they're physically on there or they just don't have the resources. And so, you know, I'm happy to hear that, that, that is the, the move, as it should be. It is the gold standard in education and we do have low COVID numbers. And I, I work in schools as well. Like, I understand a lot of the anxieties that are being raised here. I'm, I'm in school-based health clinics in the city. And so, you know, I'll also be going back to the schools next week. And, but I, I do believe that, you know, with our community resources and goodwill, like, that there, there are, there are ways that we can, you know, creatively move towards reopening and reopening with the gold standard of being in person, especially for our younger learners. Because I'm, I don't know if some essential workers spoke today, but as of like last week, there was not even a childcare plan for the people who maybe can't even be at home. And I know a lot of families have left the district to form pods that aren't feasible for everyone, which felt really kind of unfair. So, um, you know, I, I guess I would just speak out in support for the in-person option and moving to that as the gold standard based off what we know about our community spread. And, you know, I also have heard a lot of concerns for parents who do feel like they can't go in person. And, you know, I, I, I don't know, I guess it's a question, will full remote still be offered for those people who feel like they can't physically come to the schools? I, I'll leave that question to be answered when I get off the line. But I, again, I'm, I'm reiterating my support for in-person learning, especially for younger learners who, and their families, who can't navigate the remote or hybrid options. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Xenia Frisby?
Xenia Frisby? Yes, I'm here, thank you. I just wanted to have an opportunity to comment. I'm a physician, I'm an internist, I've worked throughout this pandemic. And when we first started, we were scared out of our wits about going in to see patients and not knowing whether our PPE was going to be sufficient. And what we learned over the, you know, several months where we had basically 95% of our hospital filled with COVID patients is that if you wear your PPE properly, then what that really means is eyes, nose and mouth covered. It doesn't mean you have to be covered in head to toe with a half-matt suit or anything like that, that you're relatively, that you're safe, really. And we've had, once we figured that piece out from the standpoint, none of our staff at the hospital were having transmissions unless they were not following their PPE, for instance, eating in the lounges with their masks on. And I can understand that the, the fear that staff have about coming into the schools and possibly exposing themselves to the virus. I think it's a slightly different situation. We're not going into rooms where there's going to be tons of COVID patients popping and spewing COVID virus all over the place. And, and so, if staff feel are concerned, they should cover their eyes, nose and mouth, so a face mask as well as goggles or something to protect their eyes. And, and hopefully, that would give them some reassurance. I know that for our children, it's been extremely exceedingly difficult for them to be away from their friends and they are very much looking forward to having that social aspect. The learning, you know, if we miss a year of super high-quality education, I think it would be okay, but social peace is not okay. And that has been a really big struggle for our family. So, I would just, I, I'm just speaking in support of full reopening. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Andrew Bonback available to speak?
Yes, hi. My name's Andrew Bonback. I am also a physician and I'm also just speaking to voice my full support for reopening in a full model, especially for the Hillside students. I think we're really blessed to live in a community like Hastings-on-Hudson where all of our citizens are showing respect for what COVID is. And I think everybody here buys into the importance of social distancing, face masks. And that's why the positivity rate for our community and for pretty much all of Westchester and much of New York is well below the 1% prevalence rate. And I don't think this is going to change, provided we don't alter our behaviors. And I think, again, we are a town that respects science and respects this virus. And we don't need to be fearful of it, we just need to be respectful. And I think that's what we do. And as someone mentioned earlier, even with the vaccine, the prevalence of this virus will not be at 0%. So, it's unrealistic to say there's going to be a time, six months from now, when everybody can take off their mask and be back to normal. I think we're in as good a place now as we can be. And I think this place that we're in is the new norm for the foreseeable future. I personally- I've personally taken care of over 250 unique COVID-19 patients since March. And these are some of the sickest patients who are intubated on ventilators where the risk of contracting COVID is as high as possible. I have worn normal PPE. I have not worn extreme PPE. I've worn suggested PPE. And I have not gotten COVID being around the sickest patients with this disease. And the staff and all the students will be safe if they follow the rules. And I think this is a town that knows how to follow the rules. So I think we can be a model town in terms of how to reopen. And I think we could be a model town in terms of following the science. And I think we could be a model town in showing how we can respect this virus without being afraid of the virus. So I'd like to voice my full support for reopening the schools full-time with a special emphasis on doing that for the elementary schools. Thanks.
Thank you. Is Salvatore Gagliano on the line?
Hi, thanks. I just want to echo the prior comments about how this feels a bit rushed. And to me, I'm blindsided, as is my wife. And it feels like this is kind of being squeezed in at the last minute. The one thing I haven't heard about this evening is the ability to leverage rapid testing in order to ensure that students that do attend in person are in fact free of the virus. That's an important factor, I think, as, as, you know, the, the public has been focused on that. I think, I think with respect to prior comments about how, you know, if you wear PPE and do the right things, you won't get it. Well, we're dealing with children and children don't have the self-discipline and self-control to not touch things, to, you know, to not always stay six feet away from each other, to not put their hands in their mouth. It just is what it is because they're kids. And so I'd rather be safe than sorry. We, we also don't know about the long-term ramifications of the impact of the virus on the human body. And again, this feels rushed and rash and isn't taking full consideration of not just the current health, but future health implications on our children. So just wanted to voice, voice that opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. I have several statements to be read. Is there anybody else on the call that would like to make a statement before I read the comments? Okay, so.
Yes, I would.
Could you please state your name?
My name is Aaron Rabichoff.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Aaron Rabichoff.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. And I'm not prepared either to speak, but I just wanted to have another voice support those who have talked about being blindsided by this. I support our teachers. And one thing I want to say is that when I hear people talk about science and they do not mention ventilation, which is one of the most important components in the transmission of this disease, I, I'm lost on that. If we're talking about science, we need to talk about all the facts. And one of them is that a standard in schools right now is a three when it comes to the exchange of air in a building. And that is, those are guidelines that were pre-COVID. It's a standard and it has, it does not actually clean the air. And when people try to compare schools to hospitals, hospitals have ventilation that schools do not have. We have very old buildings. It's supposed to be a standard of five, according to a Harvard study that was done. And there've been many, many studies that have been coming out, which I can't cite at this moment. But I think if, you know, if we're going to make a decision that is based on all the facts, that needs to be considered. And, you know, we need to hear from engineers and we need to hear what is going on in the building. I have not heard that enough. And it makes me very nervous. I do support the people who said that maybe this would work better for younger kids. But I do not think it is safe for older kids. I do not think it is safe for the teachers who are in these buildings where the ventilation is poor. And many studies have shown that people have gotten sick in those situations. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Can I speak?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Catherine DiMartino. I have three students in the district. And echoing everyone's sentiments, I appreciate the hard work and commitment of our administrators and our faculty and our staff in, in thinking all of this through. I did want to take a moment to talk about process. I had purposely looked at the agenda to see what was on it tonight, and this was not on it. And as a parent who has been actively engaged in this, it's just disappointing not to have that level of transparency so that we can really have full community discourse. And then just one point I want to make, because we've had an interesting conversation about all-in tonight and hybrid, but we have not heard about the remote option. And I know that is part of the larger state mandate. And I feel like as we're talking about all these different options, the remote learning piece needs to be considered as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Janine, it's Jeremy Galland on the School Board. I was wondering if we could see if we have about seven comments to read. Is that something we can consider doing in the second public comment section? As it's, we're going into our third hour now and we do have stuff. Lauren, is that something that you would?
Jeremy, I think that's a fine suggestion. So at this point, we can close the public comment. Thank you for those who spoke up this evening and in advance to those who prepared those to be read. And they will be read at the second public comment portion. We can move on to business. We have business items A. Included in that is, is a resolution, which is number one. And then items two through 25. Do any board members have any comments or questions about the number one resolution or the items two through 25?
This isn't a big deal, but I was just curious on the whole child connection proposal. Is that maybe, I don't know, Melissa, if that's something you could talk to just briefly? Like, about what it is and which option we're choosing? I'd just love to know a little bit more about that.
Sure, happy to. So Valerie and I had the opportunity to meet with some of the professionals from that organization. And in, this is really in service to the social emotional learning framework that I have been working on with.
My assistant superintendent, Melissa Samansky. And now she's, audio is gone. I'm going to get off the call.
Okay, with, with Jeanette Coker, who has really taken the lead on that and the building administrators. So option two is the one that we're interested in, which is the two professional learning sessions, inclusive of the signature practices. There has been some planning and thought around incorporating that into the superintendent's conference days this week. It has not yet occurred because it is, is before you for consideration. But this is really to support the transition. There's been a lot of talk, not only in the public comment, but just in general in education right now around the significant social emotional learning needs that students will have. And adults in the system will have, quite frankly, transitioning back to school. And so this is to support that professional learning.
The, so the option that we're going, you're looking at now is, I guess one thing I was curious about was, you know, buying something now for throughout the school year when that seems a little bit up in the air. I'm wondering if it's, you're looking at this three or you're looking at one or two?
So we're looking at one professional, well, it's two professional learning sessions. And so the thought is to have the Hillside professional learning session happening and then a separate session happening for Farragut and for the high school so that it's, it's differentiated, so that there are two different trainings.
Okay, so it's, it's something that we do now and then we can determine, do we want to continue to engage with it later? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Were there any additional questions or comments about the business items one through 25? Is there a motion to approve business items one through 25?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor?
Was that Allison who seconded?
Yes, it was Allison.
Thank you.
All right, now we're moving on to business items 3B, which is the placement and services for CSE and CPSE. Were there any questions or comments about those placements? Is there a motion to approve items, the business 3B placement and services for CSE and CPSE? And a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, we're going to move on to personnel.
Lauren, number 11 needs to be tabled as that has changed. The, the last one, Valerie Lynn, had emailed me about it.
Okay.
P11 just needs to be tabled. There was a slight change to it. So we'll table it for this evening and, and make the correction.
So I'm sorry, it's under Personnel B11?
It's just number P11, Lauren. So P1 through P10 are intact. It's just that, that one, P11, that there was a slight revision. So we're going to table the last one and bring it back at a later date.
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify more. You know, you're talking about Personnel A or B?
Oh, I'm sorry, Personnel A. I'm sorry, Lauren.
Okay, thanks.
The first, the, the leave of absence, I believe, correct?
Thank you. I thought you said B.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Still tired.
It's late, yes. So we're looking at Personnel Item A, which are a number of leaves of absence. And Maureen has commented that we're going to leave off 11. So are there any questions or comments about one through 10? Is there a motion to approve Personnel Items 4A, 1 through 10?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, we're looking at Personnel Items B. These are items one through 13. Are there any questions or comments about these appointments? Is there a motion to approve the appointments, Items 1 through 13?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? And then there's an amendment. And this is amending the appointment of Drew Wendell to interim Director of Health, Physicals, Education and Athletics. Is there a motion to, are there any questions about that amendment I should ask first? Is there a motion to approve the amendment?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? Moving on to the minutes, yes?
It's okay. I would just like to introduce one of our new hires who's been on the call.
Oh, thank you, Melissa, of course.
I would like to recognize her. So it is my pleasure to recognize Ms. Melissa De La Barrera. And this is for the role of Office Assistant Automated Systems, working very closely with me up in Central Office and joining our Central Office team. Following a process where she completed a screening, a committee interview, performance tasks, a reference check, we're confident that she will serve as a dedicated and highly competent professional. Recently, she's worked as Secretary of Pupil Personnel Services for the Hendrick Hudson School District. She filled a temporary vacancy there. She has provided executive-level secretarial support. She's had over 25-plus years of experience in business and legal, including longevity at title insurance companies, and has an extreme summary of qualifications, ranging from everything from organizational skills to interpersonal skills, operations analysis, vendor coordination, database administration, fluency in Spanish. So the list goes on and on. And I am really delighted to present her to the board and to the community and thrilled that she's joining our team. So Melissa, thank you and thanks for hanging in there and getting to know our learning community this evening.
Thank you. It was great to be here. I look forward to working with everyone and, and meeting everybody in the community. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight and congratulations and welcome to Hastings.
Thank you.
Valerie, can I speak on behalf of Larry and Gabby?
Please do. Thank you, Laura.
So Special Education has had the opportunity to have two great new hires. I'm going to start with Mr. Larry Serantani. We've been really lucky. He actually, for those of you who know that we are in a consortium with Irvington, and our communication students are with us from kindergarten to fifth grade. And then when they go to Irvington for sixth through eighth grade, Larry has been their teacher. And now he has joined us at Hastings. So we are beyond thrilled. He has a Bachelor's of Art in History and Public Policy from Syracuse University. He loves Syracuse. If anybody wants to talk about Syracuse, he will tell you all about it. He has a Master's of Art in Elementary Inclusive Education from Columbia University and an advanced certificate in childhood and adolescent special education. He, in checking his references, aside from just even seeing him teach myself, his willingness and dedication is incredibly impressive and speaks to his student-focused approach. Others also shared that he truly thinks of students' needs and is incredibly thoughtful and creative about ways to address those needs. And he leaves no stone unturned. During, Mr. Larry loves spending time with his nephew, who's turning, who I think at this time has already turned one. And during COVID quarantine, he spent his free time reading nonfiction and cooking for various diets. So I just want to welcome Larry and I think he's online. So thank you for, for waiting this out, this long evening. And if you wanted to say a quick, if you're here and you wanted to say a quick, thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Laura, for that introduction. I just wanted to take a quick second to thank the Board of Education for this appointment. And I look forward to being part of the Hastings School District and working with the students at Farragut Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you. Welcome to Hastings.
And then I just want to follow up with the recommendation of Ms. Gabriela Sokol to the probationary position of Special Education at Hillside. Gabby joined Hillside back when she was in college. And she came to us on her summer and winter breaks over the, in between college just to be part of a school and to substitute and be in the classroom. She became, upon her graduation, she became Hillside's permanent sub. She's done several leave replacements in both Farragut Middle School and Hillside Elementary School for general education and special education, as she is certified in both. She has consistently demonstrated her ability to establish relationship with students, teachers, staff. This past year, she has been a member of the Professional Learning Committee, the Special Education District Committee, and was the advisor of the Hillside Newspaper, which is not an easy job. She's participated in all the two new teacher meetings at Amy Kay's brand, as well as the mentor meetings with Ms. O'Tchacher. And she's had, been mentored by two of our, of our, of our staff members. And she's had been mentored by two of our staff members. Ms. Sokol enjoys spending time with her family and taking summer beach trips. And during quarantine, Ms. Sokol spent many hours mastering her grandmother's favorite holler recipe. So thank you, Gabby, for joining us. And I don't know if you're still on either, because I know you've been waiting, but if you are, and if you want to say a quick hi. Maybe she's not, I don't know, or maybe she's not able to speak, because I know she has been on waiting. So Gabby, if you can hear us, thank you. We feel very lucky to have you as part of, as part of the Special Education community. So welcome.
Congratulations, Gabby. Thank you, Melissa and Laura, for sharing that information about the new educators and appointments in the district. We can move on to the minutes. We have the minutes from the August 10th, 14th, and 21st of August. Do any board members have any questions or comments about the minutes from either of those three meetings? Is there a motion to approve Items 5A, B, and C, the minutes from August 10th, 14th, and the 21st?
I moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, we have just a few items of new business that are related to board functioning. The first is Item 6A, which is to get volunteers for two positions outside of our district where board members are representative to NISBA, which is the New York State School Board Association, and then a representative to the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association, which is a similar advocacy organization, but more localized. I know that for the second position, that Allison Andrews performed that role last year, and it's my understanding that you'd like to do that again, Allison? Is there someone on the board, I can't recall who participated in the NISBA advocate last year? Is there someone this year who would like to take on that role? I can certainly provide my name to NISBA as the contact, but perhaps it's something that another board member might be able to participate in. It is for legislative advocate, and just last week, I participated in a call that LA Engels' office allowed NISBA membership to participate in. This was in regard to issues of funding or any other issues we felt pertinent to discuss with the congressman. And I certainly, I wanted to make the situation for Hastings known on that call. So for the time being, I can continue and put my name out there as the person to contact through NISBA. But if someone else wants to take on that role, please, you can let, let me know. The board also needs to organize itself into its different committees. And I'm just pulling up my own list here. And we have a number of committees that, they're all the same as last year. And some folks have let me know where they'd like to participate in, some different from last year, some the same. And just reminding all board members that we can't exceed three participants on each committee, because then we run the risk of being a quorum attending a committee. Some committees are district committees, meaning they have representation across, across the district and sometimes outside of the school community. And some are board committees, which are policy facilities and the Finance and Audit Committee. The Finance and Audit Committee has historically run sort of together. Sometimes in other districts, they're separated out. So if we can just, I'll go through the committees, and if you can voice your interest, and hopefully, we can move through this list quickly. So for the Finance and Audit, I've already heard from Doug that he'd like to participate in that again. Is there another one or two board members that would like to participate?
I'd like to be on those two as well.
Then the next is the Board Student Liaison Committee, which is an opportunity for a board member to meet routinely with Valerie, Melissa, and Luata Pietro with the student trustee, to talk about their participation in board functioning.
I'd like to continue doing that.
There's also the Community Leaders Group, which is chaired by Valerie. I participated in that last year, and it was an opportunity for district leadership to meet with leaders outside of the school district. For example, the mayor participated, the chief of police, different leaders in the religious community also participated. Is there anyone interested in participating in that group this year?
I would do it if there's a slot still, Lauren.
Sure.
I'm sorry, Lauren, what's the group?
Community Leaders, which I believe you were part of last year too, Jody.
I'm happy to do this.
Okay. The Curriculum Thought Group, which is led by Valerie and Melissa, which also has a wide-ranging participant group outside of the school district to include other thought leaders in the community to discuss more broadly the direction of our district and student learning in schools. It was, it was a partner to the Book Study Group that also occurred last year.
I'm happy to continue to do that. I can also go to a different committee if needed.
Okay. And I participated in that last year as well.
Yeah.
The Diversity Committee, I know that Sylvia has already voiced that she'd like to continue working in that group. Is there anyone else who'd also like to join the Diversity Committee?
Yes, I'd like to be on that committee, Lauren.
Okay. Facilities, which I know Doug also wants to participate in. He's already mentioned. Is there anyone else who'd also like to work on facilities?
Yes, I'd like to be on Facilities, Lauren.
Okay. Health and Safety, which hasn't always had a robust participation, but I think will have a different tenor this school year. And I know Sylvia would also, would like to volunteer for that committee. Is there anyone else who'd like to work on the Health and Safety Committee?
Yes, I'd like to be on that one.
Okay. Policy Committee, which is another board committee. And I participated in the years past, but if someone else who hasn't participated would like to this year?
Yeah, if there's a slot available, I'd like to be on that committee.
Jeremy, some of the committees, like Health and Safety, usually meet right at the very end of the school day. I don't know if that's a problem for you, timing-wise with teaching.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to determine, once the participants are gathered, what the timing of each committee would be. So the expectation or hope is that each board member could volunteer for three, at least three committees, two or three, and then, you know, rotate out if their schedule doesn't allow. But the ones that include employees of the district are typically either right before school or right after school. So I know that, for example, the Health and Safety Committee included the school nursing staff or representation of them, and that's why it was, you know, that, the timing of that. But certainly, I would say volunteer, and then if we need to rotate out, then we need to rotate out. So we need a volunteer for the Special Education Committee?
Can I ask, Lauren, do the district committees, I mean, I know there's a lot of committees here, and it's going to be hard to get a lot of people across all of them. The district committees, the four board committees, you know, require board members, obviously. The district committees don't necessarily require board members, like, right?
That's right. Historically, they've included board members. So I wanted to give the opportunity for board members to participate. But if it's a challenge in people's schedules or otherwise, then, then they won't be included and will somehow, you know, hear back or get reports back through administrative comments regarding those committees that have been meeting.
I mean, my understanding of the Special Ed Committee was that, I think historically, and Jody, you may know this, but it was kind of a subcommittee of maybe the Curriculum Committee or it met. And then, you know, there were, you know, some big issues that came up that required a lot of really high-level board attention. And, you know, some of those were hires, and some of those hires are now in place. And I want, and so I just, I throw it out there that I just want to make sure that it's not perceived by anyone in the public that, you know, not having board participation is anyway saying that there's not strong support. Sometimes these committees work better if the administration does the work and brings it to the board. So I just wanted to throw that out, throw that out.
Yes.
There are, there are times where board participation is actually can be, can get in the way of good functioning, so.
No, I appreciate that, Doug. And we did keep the list similar to last year, and we did have a board member participating last year. But you're right, in my first year on the board, there was a Curriculum Committee, and that was phased out with the hiring of our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum. So I think there's only one other, which historically has also had a board member, which is the Theater Arts Committee. I don't know if a board member wants to participate on that. And that really is to serve as the Theater Arts Program spans K through 12 and, you know, requires coordination of facilities and staffing and programming. That's why a board member has historically provided some support there. All right, so I will, I will send around the draft of these committees to everyone. And if you'd like to change based on your schedule, we certainly can. But it will be posted up on the website also for the public to see the participants in these various board and district committees. The next item of new business is a statement on board goals. Typically, this time of year, the board would have convened a list, created a list of specific goals that are related to the work the administration's doing to, on a, on a broader and more visionary level, provide guidance to what the administration is working on in the school year.
Lauren, can I just, I think someone, someone needs to mute their phone.
We have people who are in the sink or in the bathroom online. Can we mute everybody?
About to go south.
Okay, thank you. I was hearing just an echo, not the other noise. So I wanted to just state now that the board has prepared a statement regarding the goals, because we would like to revisit what typically would have occurred and been presented to the community with just a general statement regarding the outset of this particular school year, as it is quite unconventional. So I'll read a statement that the board has prepared together. It says, "At the outset of the 2021 school year, the primary goal for the Hastings-on-Hudson Board of Education is to provide an educational environment that is physically and emotionally safe for all students and staff, and to provide support for the reopening of our schools. The health, safety, and welfare of students and district staff are our priority. And the safer turn of all students' full-time in-person learning is our ultimate goal within the guidelines of New York State Education Department, New York State Department of Health, and any mandates by the Governor of New York. We seek meaningful learning opportunities for all students, no matter which model of schooling that we have, and encourage innovation and creativity to engage students within the bounds of our human and financial resources. The board will reopen its discussion of 2021 Board of Education goals at a meeting later this fall, once the school reopening phase is underway." We now have our second public comment. Janine, at this point, if you could share the statements that were to be read to the public?
Certainly.
Thank you.
This one is from Dr. Lauren Chen. Dear members of the Hastings-on-Hudson School Board, I am writing today to strongly urge you to open the schools for full-time in-person education with a robust virtual platform. Working together with many of you on the Reentry Planning Committee these past few months, I have seen how dedicated you are to the Hastings community. I was honored and excited to join the Reentry Committee to be able to lend my expertise and assistance to our community as we plan for reopening. I am a pediatrician, and I oversee school-based health centers in New York City. I am very concerned about the long-term adverse effects of prolonged school closures. I share your concern about health and safety surrounding reopening. However, keeping schools closed long-term has well-known adverse effects. Since March, I've seen an increase in mental health issues, food insecurity, accidents, and nonaccidental trauma. The AAP estimates an increase in childhood obesity as well as prolonged, as physical abuse in the hospital. This is likely the tip of the iceberg. For so many students, school is a safe haven when home isn't safe, and you must stay home. The effects are tragic. Even our affluent district prolonged school closures, coupled with an unpredictable fall schedule, have led families into an unsafe chase for childcare. Additionally, our affluent town is not an exception. Many families are suffering significant income insecurity in these unstable times. Sadly, I'm also seeing families leave the district in droves, which gives me grave concern for the long-term health of the district. Even though, even more distressing, many of the families who are left in the district are those who lack the finances or connections to pursue other options. This serves to only deepen disparities in our district. We have seen around the world that in areas with low levels of community prevalence, opening school does not increase overall prevalence of disease. Additionally, especially with the youngest learners, there is no evidence that children are transmitting the disease to their teachers, school staff. We cannot look to the rest of the country as they recklessly open. As a physician, I know and respect COVID. I understand the fear from teachers and staff. During those early terrifying days in March, my husband and I, both physicians, wept together as we had had hard conversations about our future. We've watched with amazement and pride, as New York has stood alone in building a framework where it is safe for children to return to school. As a state, we have a robust testing and tracing network. PPE supply lines have improved, and most importantly, we've brought the community, community prevalence down to less than 1%. In this district alone, where the $160,000 has been spent to improve the buildings, all with the hope of a return to full-time in-person education. When masking and physical barriers, we have exceeded requirements for reopening put forward by the governor. Please consider the long-term health of our children in our community. Intereely, Lauren Chen. The next one is from Janine Campingo Berlin. A statement about my experience as a nurse with COVID-19. I work as a visiting nurse in Yonkers and have done so through the whole pandemic. I visit six to eight people a day in their I visit six to eight people a day in their homes. Some are private homes in nice areas, other apartments in borderline areas. I've been on the street and lobbies, elevators, common areas, et cetera. I have people from all walks of life with a myriad of health problems, including COVID-19. Most of my patients do not live alone, many with multiple, multi-generational family members and caregivers coming in and out on a daily basis. I have worn a mask, gloves, and since about a month, goggles as a baseline main dated by the CDC. I have tested negative for COVID and antibodies. I was initially afraid and unsure, but my confidence grew with time and experience. Numbers are currently very low. I feel distance learning is not a good option. I believe school should be full-time in-person learning. We can distance, use masks, and hand washing, open windows, and do things outdoors when possible. Thank you. Next one is from Naomi Santoni. I am a registered nurse who worked directly with COVID ICU patients throughout the pandemic. I am, many of my coworkers were unbelievably frightened at the onset of the pandemic. Many staff, for medical reasons, could not work. Some people voluntarily chose to retire, and many chose to work in less risky areas. Thankfully, we as a community, we flatten the curve, and the number of COVID cases we are currently treating is minimal. The community of Hastings was very kind and generous to myself and my hospital, and none of us will ever forget that. I believe that the signs and the numbers at this time point us in the direction of sending our kids back to school. Remote learning is simply terrible for our kids. Thank you. From Christina Marquez. She sent in a comment, "If the district can't provide laptops for all children, why was remote learning even on the table? How could a child learn remotely without a computer? I received an email last night telling me my son is on a waiting list for a computer which won't be in until late September. The plan was clearly not thought out and was made solely on emotion, but I believe her issue was resolved." So I don't know if that was, if she meant it as a public comment, or if she had just sent me the email.
Yeah, that was resolved.
So, okay. Lauren Tobin. Thank you so much for allowing my voice to be heard tonight, all but in the form of an email. I am an early childhood educator and a parent of a rising first grader at Hillside. My message tonight is simple: to promote full-day learning at Hillside Elementary School. As we all know, the social-emotional development is nonexistent with the two-day hybrid model that we currently have in place. Social in-person peer-to-peer learning is critical for the development of our young children. With virtual learning, there's no opportunity for think, pair, share, turnip talk, and learning-through-place strategies that are crucial for early learning development. In addition, children within early childhood don't have the appropriate fine motor skills to navigate the technology devices needs for virtual learning. This is a problem. Day camp, with the extreme safety protocols, my son had a magical summer at Mohawk Day Camp. Within six weeks, Jake grew exponentially in terms of his social and emotional development. This was due to the fact that Jake's zone of proximal development was identified and challenged by the Mohawk team. This cannot happen with virtual learning. Children need to be around other children to learn. I'm happy to report that not one child at Mohawk was sick with COVID-19. We got to experience the true benefits of what camp is supposed to do: inspire creativity, curiosity, and build confidence which falls in line with Hillside's mission. Childcare issues with virtual learning. Over the past few days, I have noted childcare pod services at the House of Sports, the Place, Place Gymboree, and Westchester Skating Academy. Sending your child to alternative pods, learning groups, creates a socioeconomic divide that plagues our town already. Social justice should always be in the forefront of our minds, and we're making these difficult decisions. Let's work together to break the wall between the haves and have-nots to showcase unity for our children. Thank you for listening and your support. Lauren Tobin. Rafaela Delahueira spoke, so I'm not sure if I can read his comment. Melissa Jean Miller. I hope you are doing well. I would like to make a public comment. I first want to say thank you to the board and administration for all their efforts and countless hours spent creating a good plan to reopen our schools over this summer. I understand it was a mammoth task with so many different variables, a tight timeline, and a constrained budget. I'm commenting tonight in support to send our children back in-person full-time. Given the amazing safety precautions the district has taken in our schools and our local infection rates below 1%, we are set for a successful and safe return for full-time in-person education. As the mother of a special needs first grader and incoming kindergartner, I have watched them struggle to translate their education, socializing, into a virtual platform. We had to stop virtual playdates because they would end in tears of frustration. Many children like mine are not emotionally mature enough to handle a livestream all day with no interaction from peers or their teachers. With the district's goal being to move to full-time in-person, do you have a set timeline for students to return to school five days a week? What does the virtual-only curriculum look like with this transition? This is from Sharon Weiss. Dear school board members, thank you for these community forums. It's quite a challenging time. I appreciate the district listening to the needs of community members and allowing many voices to be heard. I am a parent of a fourth and first grader in our district. I am concerned that the current hybrid plan does not consider the developmental, educational, and logistical differences between older and younger children and their families. The present hybrid model is especially difficult for dual-income families, single parents, families with limited resources, and for essential workers who are not even physically present during the day. I am a licensed clinical social worker who cares for the most vulnerable members of Westchester County. My job is onsite at a behavioral health hospital. In our community, treating the most vulnerable populations in Westchester County, I have connected with visiting nurses whose jobs are to manage the healthcare of medically vulnerable populations in their homes. Community members who work in family courts representing clients who are victims of abuse and need advocacy, medical doctors, and many other professionals and service workers who cannot do their jobs from home. If we do not change course and have a viable essential worker program in the community while we form a plan that will address this gap, healthcare and essential jobs will be lost. I remember seeing all the signs on our doors and hearing the noise at 7:00 PM to thank those who left their homes daily in the service of others during the worst months of COVID-19 outbreak. Even during virtual, schoolteachers and administrators taught our children how brave these individuals were. Now, many of the essential workers in our community will inevitably have to stop working. Those we clap for will lose both needed income for their families and the responsibility of caring for others during this difficult time. Elementary school can be safely implemented, especially considering our low rates of COVID and the dedication and support and resources of an amazing district. After-school and evening programs for high school kids to socialize and learn together can also be put in place with flexibility and creativity from the district. Thank you for your consideration. A couple more. Emily Zuckerman wrote, "I am writing in support of the plan to return to school 100% in-person." Sandra, I'm sorry, I'm missing her last name. "I want to thank everyone involved, the board, teachers, leadership, and staff. This is an intense and scary time, so much is unknown, and your work is deeply appreciated. There are two main points I'd love to share. The attendance protocol is currently proposed to be done period by period is onerous. Wondering if it's possible to do attendance once a day as in the spring. Two, I would love to echo Doug's comments about the need for more organized and frequent communication. I know this is difficult. However, I think it would be very helpful for everyone to bring everyone along with the decisions being made and why they're being made. For instance, due to the changing guidance from the state and what the possibilities are being considered." Okay, from Jennifer and Marco E. Bonaventura. "We are writing to ask that in any changes to plans for the model, the district will be adopting. That serious consideration be given to how the schools will be able to provide a robust education to those choosing the all-remote option. The current hybrid model offers these students minimal opportunity for teacher interaction, for social engagement and connectedness, and for responsive teaching addressing the individual needs of the child. We ask that the education of this group of children not be dismissed or treated as secondary. We have incredible respect for our teachers, but have concerns that current plans do not allow them the time or resources to be able to accomplish this. We ask that a clear, detailed, and thoughtful plan on how to give teachers the ability to optimize learning for those students who will be remaining at home be articulated in any plan the district considers prior to its adoption." Let me just make sure that I spoke everybody's comments. I have one from Roseanne Putayamada, and she says, "We feel like we were very blindsided by this here are our concerns. We did not hear any plans for testing. How do you reopen fully without getting people tested or have a plan for testing kids and staff? What was this sudden and drastic change based on? Are other districts doing this? Also, what will remote look like? Did social distancing protocols change? If we can't even have meetings in person, how are we ready for the kids to go in?" All right, those are all the comments that I have. I don't know if you want to ask if anybody is on the call still, Lauren, who might like to speak again? Does anyone, is anyone in the public available who wants to make a comment? Did we get everybody? Okay, that's it, Lauren.
Thank you, Janine.
Thank you.
Are there any board comments this evening?
I had, I had a couple of questions. There's a lot of questions on Facebook about whether the plan, whether, well, a couple of things. One, I saw something about, something that Cuomo had said about live streaming, not, you know, some new announcement about live streaming, and it's the first I've heard of it. I just wanted to see if that's just false rumors on Facebook, or if there's any truth to some new announcement that was made around, around streaming?
We haven't seen any guidance from the Governor's Office or from the New York State Department that talks about live streaming.
Okay. And then there were a lot of questions about, or comments about whether there's still an all-remote option. So I know we don't comment on, or answer the comments, but I'll ask the question here is, is there still an all-remote option? And has anything changed with that?
Nothing's changed. It's still, there's still an all-remote option. The only thing that was, so I was asked to do this presentation on this particular component of the plan, which is, you know, how do we get all children in? That is what the governor indicated. And there, you know, this, this presentation was not to suggest, because there's no vote that's been taken. This is, the title of this is "Considerations for Phasing in 100% All-In Person Attendance," because as, as everyone can see, there are lots of different opinions about what, you know, what makes sense. So the fact that we're sharing an opinion about, you know, considerable part of this plan is, should no, by no means suggests that any other parts are scrapped or shifted. You know, there are three forms of reentry that we were asked to plan for. One was 100% remote. The other was all-in, and the other was a hybrid model. So those are still on the table as the three, I mean, is three, three options across the course of the school year that districts may have to find themselves going into. What, what I was asked to present was, why aren't we talking about the all-in model? That's been part of conversations, emails, concerns for a few weeks now. So this is, you know, for those of you who may not remember that, that there hasn't been a lot of conversation about all-in. So we've been focusing on, you know, hybrid. We've been focusing on, on 100% remote. But not a lot of conversation's been devoted to 100% all-in, all-in attendance. And nor has it, nor was it taken off of the sort of table as, as one of the three options that we were supposed to prepare for. So I just wanted to remind the public of that, through that comment, Jeremy.
So just a couple more clarifications, because I've read some other people saying that our plan was not approved by the state. I haven't heard anything about that. Is that?
That's absurd.
So that is, that is not true. So, and then I think there's a lot of confusion about, like, what is the plan right now? I'm seeing people on Facebook assuming that we're doing all-remote or all-in. I'm seeing other people saying, even for myself, I'm not sure that we've made any decisions tonight, tonight. So, so where do we stand right now?
Nothing's changed. What we presented was, so the question was, what does it take to open 100%? That was the question that led to the presentation. And there've been, there's been a fair amount of questions, concerns, and you know, groups of parents legitimately asking, "Why aren't you talking about the 100% all-in attendance model?" I think that's a legitimate question to, you know, to, that we have to answer, respond to responsibly. Because we haven't talked about it, some parents have felt that it's no longer on the table. And so this is an opportunity to explore it in ways in which we haven't up until this point, is to, to share, what would it take? Since the governor has tasked us with that, I mean, that's pretty clear. What does it take to reopen fully? And so what I have done was to, after lots of conversations, working, planning, reviewing rooms, measuring, all of those components that would lead to being able to articulate what those kinds of things would have to be in order for us to want, to open 100%. All this was, we're looking at those considerations. And so these are the things that would have to take place, all the barriers, many of which, as we could see, are already in order, or have already been ordered. Everyone knows what the infection rate is. Again, the governor himself said, you know, that a lot, that decisions are really driven by, you know, the regional infection rate. And, and that particular, very important metric has not really been something that's, you know, sort of, I think, been a part of the discussions. And, and so I appreciate those families who've been pushing this. And the other component is, if there are families who really are financially distressed and cannot afford a pod or other forms of childcare. And I think this, that it's a disservice not to have the discussion. So I appreciate those families who raised that issue. I hear about them. Some of, you know, other people hear about them. And I think it's a tale of two cities in this, in this town when it comes to, you know, yes, families who can, you know, provide and are not affected by this. But as, as strongly as this, you know, we, you know, we exert our sort of sense of social justice and, you know, progressiveness, progressive, you know, sort of, you know, what attitudes. There is a real issue with parents who don't have resources. And if their children can't come to school, they are seriously disadvantaged. So I want to also articulate that because not, probably some parents don't feel comfortable talking about that. So I'm going to be their voice and talk about the fact that they are in bad shape if they cannot come to school, can't send their children to school.
Just, just a couple of the questions.
Jeremy, can I just interject for one second, too, just to add on to what Valerie's saying? I think, I think we shouldn't lose sight with the fact that the governor's mandate does clearly say that the goal is for students to be in school learning. So to answer this question, you know, the considerations that Valerie presented us, to us tonight has ideas for steps for how to do that. And the other piece that she spelled out also is that the faculty and staff are going to have opportunity to also see this information this Thursday, both as a whole entire district and then within their own faculty meetings on the building level. So that, that's why I, I, you know, I, it distresses me that some in the community felt that they were blindsided by this, because this is one piece of the puzzle that sort of hasn't been discussed openly. And, you know, now that we've reached a point of, of real, you know, feet in the ground in the buildings and seeing logistically what it would take, I think it made sense at this point to bring, to bring these ideas forward to the board. So I am sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I just wanted to, you know, sort of underscore some of the things that Valerie mentioned.
I just have a couple more questions, and they're really just because the next board meetings, the 14th, in school will have started. So if, if I have a kid in Hillside, Amy rolled out a plan that, that changed from the first two weeks are all-remote to, I think it was like September 14th, kids were going in. When will we have a final decision on what kids are doing the week of the 14th at Hillside?
Well, we already know what they're doing. So the last communication was to, which included a call. So the last communication was to, which included a calendar. That was the calendar that I was referencing, that described what was happening from October 8th, so next Tuesday through October 2nd. So nothing's changed. This has been a presentation on what it would take to reopen 100%. There's no, there's been no decision to change the calendar. This has only been a presentation on what we, what would need to happen and what can happen and what is happening to eventually get all children back into the school district, which is what the governor has tasked us with doing, essentially.
So the first two weeks are still all-remote. And then September 21st, it's gold goes in on the Monday, Tuesday, and then Thursday, Friday is green?
Yeah, the same, nothing's changed on the calendar, not a single thing. All of this has been a presentation of what would happen, what would need to happen, what would shift to begin to move children back in on the basis of the fact that, that barriers are a key part of reopening. So if we don't have sufficient numbers of barriers, then we can't shift to a phased and, you know, opening with smaller numbers of children coming in over the course of the, of the month of September.
Yeah, because I think, I had seen something in Amy's that said something about the entire class would be in. That was just sort of a hypothetical?
That was a presentation to review how, if, 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 if we receive, if we receive all the barriers, if we don't have an increase in the infection rate, and if this board wanted us to entertain a 100% model of returning to the, to, to our schools, these are the things, these are, this is the thinking that would get us there. So nothing's been voted on. This is a conversation that has not happened yet.
Okay.
And, you know, and, and as I said, we owe the families who are, you know, who are wondering why we've not had this conversation.
Got it. I think the confusion was that we were talking about September, and we probably should have been talking about October, because there's no changes that are going to happen in the next week, is what it sounds like.
No, I can't, I mean, I don't know what's going to happen. I mean, I was asked to make a presentation after we've, you know, we've been spending a lot of time trying to make sure that we get to the plan that we have agreed to, which was the schedule. So this is to illustrate that we are supposed to be looking at how to get all children back in. And I think this is the, you know, first conversation that we've had. And for some people, it is a shock, because we haven't talked about it. And this is an opportunity.
Well, I think it's because school starts next week.
Yeah, I'm, I'm well aware of that, trust me.
So, so just for teachers and parents, there's, there's no change from the email that you had originally sent out about when they're thinking about what their kids are doing on September 8th and on September 14th and September 21st. At this point, there's, there's no change from the, the plan that had originally gone out last week with gold, green, and the Monday, Tuesday, flex Wednesday, green on Thursday, Friday. Teachers learning how to do the remote for the first two weeks.
Unless, after this conversation, the board looks at this and says, we need to give this consideration, because we haven't given it consideration.
Got it.
Not my call.
I would say also that Valerie's presentation to the faculty and staff on Thursday would, would come into play on, on, on her bringing forward to the board the idea that the employees of the district could get behind the timelines suggested. So I think that, you know, I think that after Thursday, when Valerie's had an opportunity to have the full district faculty meeting, and there've been smaller faculty meetings, there'd be more data on this particular plan and any timeline change to be considered by the board.
Got it. Okay, that's helpful.
But again, we're supposed to be moving in this direction. We can't forget that. The governor's made it very clear. You know, we're not supposed to stay in, you know, full remote or hybrid. You know, we're supposed to be moving in the direction of full reopening. So I just want to keep that on the table, since it isn't, as I said, something we talked about at great length. And that's, I think, is, I think what we've heard tonight on, on all sides, is that, you know, there is a desire for some form of schooling. And for some families, it's even more great, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a major disadvantage or a major, what? Setback for the family if children aren't in school.
So I'm, I'm just not clear on the vote part. When, I, I wasn't under the assumption that the board was voting on anything as a, like, I thought that was an administrative call, so a week goes by.
Presentation, Doug, I was asked to make the presentation. You stated yourself that communication has been poor. So I was asked to make the presentation, which I've done, which I'm supposed to do, because it is part of the three models that school districts were tasked with developing. So, you know, it's easy, I guess, to be, like, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm trying to make sure that we provide all of the, the information that we can possibly provide. So I'm not really sure what the board is asking me to do.
Oh, it looks like, I think what's really important is that we just understand, the families understand, whether it's in half or out, just on a week-by-week basis where, where we are. So, so we're starting off on Tuesday, and it's going to be all-remote for Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday next week. So that's a, that seems like that's a given, right? Now, now we're on to the 14th, September 14th. Right now, I think families are thinking about, what am I going to do on September 14th? And, and so the question is, when is that decision? So Amy gave a version of the week of the 14th that was different than all-remote. Right? That was, that was in her communication tonight.
Based upon if all students were to return, what kind of phase-in process would that, would that take? So that's basically, she's created another example of how a 100% phase-in model would actually work.
So right now, we're under the assumption that that week of the 14th is all-remote. That's the current communication that went out. Amy gave another theoretical approach, if it was all-in, right? Or there was a more phased model of getting kids into school the week of the 14th. And at what point do you feel we would know that? Or how does that, I guess the question is, how does that decision get made? Are there indicators the week of the 8th, which would leave, leave the administration to feel, you know what, I think we should try the plan that Amy laid out on the 14th? Or is there at some point on the 9th, let's say, I don't know what the date would be, where you say, you know what, we're going to do all-remote on the week of the 14th? I think the question isn't so much that these are all theoretical options. I think the question is just to kind of where, when is that decision going to be made? For, let's just use that one week.
Yeah, it seems that there's a challenge around any decision that's made. So I think it has to be that, you know, if we want to transition younger children back in, I think, you know, there, it has to be that, that's something that, that the public can, you know, be, you know, yes, on Thursday, we can have the conversation with our faculty and staff and have them, you know, weigh in on any plan to revise the existing plan for the month of, the month of September. And here, their concerns about safety, so that was stated upfront. The, you know, after that, so certainly we'll have information, you know, to, to, to share back. You know, based upon what we've heard here, you know, there's going to be, you know, people on both sides in terms of their feelings about this. And, you know, and, and we certainly can, you know, what do we do with all of the, the, you know, the feedback we've gotten here? You know, so there's a fair amount that we can't step away from and say, we didn't hear what we heard about, you know, you know, from, from science, a community that, you know, says it respects science. And you had a ton of people with medical backgrounds who said lots of things. You know, and at the same time, we have lots of people very concerned about being in the buildings, you know, who have to be in the classrooms with, with, with students there. But, you know, we can't dismiss those realities. So I don't know what to tell you.
Valerie, it's, it's actually, I really, I, I'm really not trying to be critical or trip up. I'm really just having a practical conversation now. I'm just trying to figure out where and when does the decision for how we engage on September 14th happen?
Well, we, what we originally said was that the first week, we take a look at whether or not the technology works. You know, that's, that's the whole premise behind starting in a 100% remote mode. We have not tested the technology. So we don't really know, you know, whether or not the children who are listening to the lessons at home will actually be able to hear their teachers. So that's always been the, at the forefront of why we went into a 100% remote mode. After that, you know, every week, we, you know, as, as I described in the, in the presentation, we've received new information from Albany. It's either come from the New York State Department of Health, the New York State Department of Office of Facilities and Planning, or the New York State Education Department. So information has been flowing fairly steadily. And on the basis of that information, we may have to, you know, shift gears in some way or, 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 or not. We may get more requests for leads if people feel that we're bringing all children back. That's another variable, you know, that, you know, frightened teachers might feel that they, that, that, you know, for their own health and wellbeing, they have to take a lead. So those are the unknowns. I mean, I know people want answers for certain things, but there are no, I can't, you know, I, there's no way for me to look, look into any crystal ball and pull that out for anyone. We have to see what happens next week. We have to listen to people, you know, who are trying to figure out what to do for their children in terms of childcare, because school is a major form of childcare. I don't think we can ever step away from that. And determine, you know, what, what, you know, what happens after, you know, Tuesday and Wednesday. I think every day, we need to take the temperature of the community as well as of our, our faculty and staff and ask them, you know, how are things going? We have our technical team who will tell us, you know, that, you know, the headsets are working, the desktops are working. The children learning at home will, and, and parents will be able to tell us whether or not the children are hearing, what are the technical issues that they're experiencing beyond the actual, the wires and the headsets and so forth. We can certainly go to, continue down the pathway that we've already laid out. I was asked to make a presentation, so that's what I did. And now, what do you want to do?
This is very, this has been very helpful. Jeremy, thank you for, you know, starting off the board comments. I do like a lot of things in our timeline. I do like that we're going to get a chance for our administration to talk to the teachers, twice, it sounds like. And although people felt blindsided by the details, I would also have to agree. I mean, in July, it was clear from New York State, they asked all districts to prioritize in-person learning, and they asked us to create three models. In our August emails to our community, it's been clear, Valerie said our ultimate goal matches the state, is to get everybody in person. So while that, I think a lot of people were confused, Jeremy, by seeing a Hillside calendar come up. I think, where do we go from here? It could be that moving forward, Lauren might decide we do a weekly board meeting to hear back when we get to see this. But it is a nice step that we are able to fulfill the, all three options. It's September 1st, it does feel rushed, but we know what we're doing. We're opening with the full remote while we test technology. That was pretty clear in the presentation. We're presenting a full-in plan to get more feedback from our teachers, and then we could possibly hear back from building leaders and administration. And we're going to be ready to make adjustments. And if I could do a board comment, I had some things I wrote down. I, I think it's clear that all three models are not typical and are not ideal. And it's also clear that one board meeting doesn't make a full-year plan. So families, teachers, staff, we're all ready to, to make adjustments. You know, we're going to continue to speak up, and we're going to do our best to create a healthy and successful plan. It was called the September reopening plan, which already implies that we were going to be flexible. Whether this is a September plan, and now we're making adjustments to it, it seems appropriate if certain things come in line. I think other things that were clear in the timeline is that we don't have these barriers. These barriers are September 11th possibly, September 16th possibly. So I think there is some clear steps that our community is able to grab from this. And if, if it feels like we need to have a Tuesday or a Monday meeting, I think we have the participation to support our administration as they try to adjust. You know, what I really wanted to add to is, I mean, our goal is to lessen risk. It's to put a plan in action that can mitigate risk. We're not trying to pretend that we're going to guarantee anybody's safety, as we know that's not possible. But what we do promise is to be flexible and to react to the facts. I'm not convinced that hybrid is an easy place to rest. It's almost like a stone on top of a hill. And if we want to share personal stories, if we are in hybrid model, my children are coming into this school, having interacted with four other school districts. So we are not able to just shut down our community into a two-square-mile bubble. My children will be doing daycare with a family that goes into Dobbs Schools, that goes into Bedford Schools, that teaches at New Rochelle, and that teaches in Yonkers. So all three models have challenges. We've been directed to work towards full in-person or as much in-person. And I think we are going to make steps incremental with as much feedback that our building leaders, our administration, and our teachers give us. So I don't want to, to rely on Facebook too much. I thought there was a lot that was clear in those presentations and a lot that we are set for. September 8th is clear, September 15th is two weeks away, and, and there might be adjustments to it. I think we're a small community, and we're ready to, to speak up and to be heard and see how that happens. And I'm, I'm excited that our school year is starting. As many of you know, I am a teacher as well. And, you know, I know that we're not essential workers as dictated by any other place, but we're not a singular group, and many of us are ready to go, and many of us are scared about the future. And that's probably typical of a lot of adults. But thank you for this meeting. For anybody, it looks like we're still in triple digits in the fourth hour. So possibly, you know, additional meetings are warranted moving forward.
I, I do, I do have a comment. I feel extremely strong about this. First of all, I, I completely understand the feeling of absolute just frustration in dealing with this. And I, I just want to say that I, I don't think any of us can really understand the pressure that the administration of Valerie has been under. It is, you know, no, no one's ever experienced this before. And, you know, I think there's been times where, actually, when Valerie gets a little fired up, I like, I like it better, because I feel like I'm getting the real you. You know, I'm getting the real, you know, we're getting to a real conversation. And sometimes these board meetings are so hard, because it's so much, it's just so much couching of things. couching of things. We have to have these hard conversations. And so I hope, you know, when you get a little bit edgy, Valerie, and we get a little, you know, I think that's normal. That's what we need, right? I mean, there's, I don't think we need to paper over everything and make it sound like it's fine, right? Um, I, I think we have to talk these things out. We all, we're all just like grappling in the dark to get to the place. But the one thing I just, um, really want to say is that I, I think what is, would be really valuable, so Jeremy, you just said, for example, well, okay, we'll have a board, we need to put dates down. Like, we will have, you know, the administrating is going to have a daily check-in every day for the first week. And I think the community will go, oh, that's great, it's good to know that. Um, and there will be communication out Thursday night or Friday, something that just says, the communication may say nothing more than, we need more data, or we're learning more, or, look, we're, we're September 14th, we're, we're all, we've not worked out some kinks. We are still in the total, you know, uh, remote phase. I think the community just wants to know, that's the date where you're going to find out more. That, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that A, B, or C is better. I'm not saying that, oh, I'm just saying that there's a level of uncertainty, not about the end goal, not about what we choose, about the process that people really want to know about. So for example, what would be great, I mean, if it is, one thing that's not clear to me, it seems perhaps clear to other people on this call, is that the board is going to be brought a decision and make a decision with the administration. If that's the case, let's clarify that right now, that that's actually part of the process. Like, I actually don't understand the decision process. It's not the decisions that I don't understand. The decisions have been laid out. I don't understand the decision process. And if you don't understand the decision process, it creates a tremendous amount of anxiety, whether or not the decision is something you agree with. And I will say right now, in no uncertain terms, I do not understand the decision process. And I think it would be very helpful to get the decision process down, even if the decision process is something where we say we will communicate something on this day, and that communication may be, we don't have enough data to make another communicate, to make a decision, we're going to keep going with the plan we've made. Uh, I'll stop now. I, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse. Um, and maybe, maybe what I'm communicating is not landing for some reason. So I'll leave it at that. But I will say personally, for me, I am not clear on the decision process, and I personally find that to be a challenge. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Doug. I'll share, um, I, I agree that the decision-making process has been confusing, um, since, since March, um, regarding, um, just the operation of the school district. I, I, I understand it to be, um, you know, um, the superintendent for Valerie to be making the decision, um, but that, um, collaborative guidance, um, is, uh, the goal. Um, so yes, it feels like, uh, we're receiving presentations and discussing, um, a lot, but there is, there is no voting involved, um, and that's confusing. Um, we're not approving or disapproving, we're sharing, we're providing feedback. Um, we're gathering information from, uh, you know, other community, uh, members who were, who didn't participate in, uh, speaking tonight or on other nights, um, and we're, we're sharing those thoughts back, um, to, to Valerie and the administration. But that, um, you know, really, it was the reopening committee that was representative, um, that made a, a plan. Um, and, um, it's now, um, you know, our, our role to, to provide more guidance as, as we learn more facts and to, to, to provide, uh, support for different aspects of the plan, um, because the plan does have different aspects, whether it's remote, um, all-in or, or hybrid. I, I, I do, I do feel like having, um, a routine, uh, sort of check-in, um, with each other and, uh, the community would be helpful, um, just in terms of, of being able to stay agile. Um, I think that it's, it's tough to stay agile. Um, it, it only provokes more anxiety when you, when you don't anticipate, um, knowing what's happening. Um, and I think, you know, there, there was a plan that was presented, uh, you know, and communicated out to the community tonight. We heard, uh, ideas for a, a different timeline, uh, at Hillside. We didn't hear a different timeline for the middle school or high school, but it was a, a proposal, an idea, um, which has not yet been shared with, uh, the, the, um, faculty and staff. Um, but, you know, so perhaps, um, you know, a, a, a check-in on a, on a, you know, routine Thursday about the upcoming week, um, I think would be, um, helpful unless, you know, I think certainly, as Valerie's pointed out, that there, there are moments where, you know, more information is going to come outside of that timeline, um, where we're going to have to make a decision outside of that hypothetical Thursday night. Um, so I think, um, you know, we need to be mindful of that as well, um, but just knowing that perhaps we can, um, have that, you know, guidepost, excuse me, a guidepost for that type of certainty. But I think, yeah, the process has been, um, it, it has been confusing. It has been tough to, um, to, to, to be in this role, um, I'll have to say. And, and, you know, I, I, I'm trying, I'm trying my best to provide, um, you know, Valerie, with the feedback I'm getting from the community, um, you know, some of the voices that didn't speak up tonight. Um, but it's not our, our role as a board to vote on, on this process. Um, it's quite an unusual, um, it, it's an unusual time to be a, a school leader, and it's an unusual time to be a school board, um, because, uh, certainly, we've never been in a position of, of voting on, on the, on the operational aspects of how the school day runs. Um, and, um, we certainly leave that, uh, to the guidance of, of, of the administration. Um, but I think it, it serves our district well to, to, to do it collaboratively, uh, but it does make it feel, uh, uh, muddy, um, to say the least. Um, and I, you know, if there are ways that, um, we can operate that, that are, are more smooth, um, it's certainly, um, I welcome hearing, um, ideas of how to do so.
I'm happy to, after this call, you know, get, get together with whoever, and, you know, talk about some just real practical, fast, easy, you know, ideas if, if anyone's interested.
I think we're doing okay. If we want to, uh, make any announcements, if you want to say by Friday, we'll decide whether or not we have a board meeting, uh, next week. I mean, we have, uh, we have to bring this, we have to let the administration present this to the teachers. We have to let the building leaders get feedback, and, uh, we're ready to collaborate. We are elected officials, and this is a huge policy, and we are able to represent a lot of people in this community. If, uh, if you want to put something out there, if you ask for suggestions, I would leave it as saying, you know, by Friday, we'll let you know if we're going to have a board meeting, uh, and, you know, another board meeting, and, uh, we'll have a chance to hear how we're doing it. Maybe the September reopening plan is, uh, you know, has two-week periods in it. I think there's a lot that is clear. What's really clear is that our administration has worked incredibly hard to make sure that we have remote options. The number of new software that we've been signing up for so that we're doing better than we did in April has been impressive. We put a lot of effort into making sure we're ready for remote. And then we put a lot of effort to make sure we're ready for hybrid if it's, if we want to improve on an all-remote. And I think we're ready now. Uh, teachers are coming back into the building. We can get great feedback now. Administrators are seeing what we're getting in, delivered weekly. I think we can start, uh, letting our community know if we're going to have more meetings and, uh, what sort of collaboration we're going to do. But we are ready to follow and support decisions that are not ideal. We're not shooting for perfect. We have a small community, and we're ready to do the best that the future allows us. October is unknown, September is sort of known, so we're going to make, uh, decisions, and it's coming very soon. I don't think we need to be, uh, so shocked that, uh, we are considering adjusting the mid-September plan based on, uh, new information. I think we've always known we're a small enough district to be flexible. Three schools, you know, right to our south is 40 schools. They are, they are hindered, we're not. We are flexible, based on the staff that we've seen, we look ready to roll, our kids are ready to roll, and, uh, we are juggling and juggling and juggling, and we're going to continue to change. I think we're doing okay here. Let's, uh, wrap up this five-hour meeting.
So in terms of next steps, um, so there is a faculty-staff meeting, uh, as I said, probably not everyone is going to be able to participate. Um, so I'd like to make sure we wait and not have any, make any decision until the faculty and staff meetings taking place at the schools. So they, we return on the 8th, I think to give it to, you know, next week to get feedback, not only feedback about, um, adjustment, adjusting and refa-, adjusting to another, uh, phasing, uh, uh, model for phasing in earlier, but also just the experience, uh, of, you know, offering remote learning, um, starting on next Tuesday. So I think that's a time to, to wait, maybe it is Friday. I think we can set a time, you know, at the end of next week where if the board is interested in, you know, having, um, a, you know, whether it is a board meeting, um, or a, you know, whatever you want to call it, but that's the time to hear the feedback from, um, the various faculty meetings, um, and also feedback about how the week went in the 100% remote mode, because now we'll have actual data. Uh, we have an experience from last March where, again, you know, no fault of the teachers, they were thrown into something that they never had to do before. And, um, you know, we've spent a lot of time, um, working to try to make sure in this version of remote learning that, you know, everything is in place for us to make sure that we, uh, implement some practices that we didn't know existed before, and now we have ironed those things out. Um, so to be able to see all of that is another opportunity, another reason why nothing should be made tonight with relative to a meeting on Friday if we're, if that valuable information isn't, you know, part of, 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 of the next conversation. So my recommendation to the board would be, if you want to have a, you know, the next most appropriate time to have a conversation would be at the end of the week. Um, so it could be the 10th or the 11th. The 11th would give you a full four days, uh, of information to, to consider.
I think that sounds like a, a very, um, good timeframe, Valerie, and I, I thank you for, um, you know, suggesting that. I mean, we could have, we could have a work session so that, um, the administration could, um, briefly present to the board, um, what, what's been happening, the successes, um, and, um, you know, um, any feedback or areas that still need to be worked on. Um, so I, I, I think that's a great idea to do it, um, at the end of the week.
And probably, people would appreciate it if it wasn't at 7:30 at night, um, but, you know, only because it's, you know, it'll be, um, not an ideal time, but maybe it is 6 o'clock, maybe it's 5:30, maybe it's, you know, somewhere in that neck of the woods, uh, that would be, um, in response to people who've worked, uh, plus, plus family members, of course, too, who, um, you know, we also have to factor in who can participate. But, um, I guess we don't have to make a decision right now, but I would ask that we think about an, an, another time to not hit 7:30 to have this kind of work session.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, Valerie. We can, um, I'll say, I, we can send a email out to board members, uh, and, you know, administrative staff tomorrow, um, to find the best time. Were there any other board comments? I just want to personally thank, um, all the community members who, uh, brought forward their, uh, comments and questions and thoughts tonight, and those who, uh, didn't speak up but listened, um, uh, to one another and listened to the information that Valerie presented tonight. Um, and, you know, thank my fellow board members for really, um, engaging, um, and being, uh, being good partners, um, with the administration on, on, on supporting their decision-making. Um, and I, I really want to thank, um, you know, Valerie, and Melissa, and Maureen, and Joe Materano, seeing the buildings today, um, really, um, gave me a greater sense that we're moving in the right direction, that the kids are going to have a great first day. Um, whether it's at, at home remotely this year, I think they're still going to have a great first day. Um, and I am really, um, really pleased, um, to see the positive energy and the, the real commitment to all the students in the district. So thank you.
Thank you to Amy, um, John, Lou and Melissa, and Jennifer and Kevin, Laura, Laura Tesva, uh, Drew, Jeanette, Maureen, the other Melissa, Joe, for all of their work. And, um, you know, talk about agility and being nimble. They truly had, that's the only way to survive these, these months, uh, is to constantly, um, rethink and adjust our thinking, um, because we're talking about the lives of children. You know, it isn't, you know, it isn't sort of, of, you know, launching a new product. This is, we're talking about educating children, and it, it should be a tough decision around what we choose to do. Um, and that we, you know, up until the 11th hour, we should be looking at all the plans to make sure that we've made the best decision.
Thank you. Is there a motion to close the Board of Education meeting?
Vote.
And a second?
Like.
All in favor? Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Night.